Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, June 3, 2025. It is now 4:04 PM, and I would like to call this special meeting to order. I understand we have several speakers to the items. Prior to going into closed session, at this time, we will take all speakers to the items. And because we will be discussing these items in closed session, we'll take all these items prior to going into closed session. Because of the number of speakers, we will be reducing the time to 90 seconds. That is similar... That is... Sorry, order, please. There's... That was the exact amount of seconds that was allotted during the DDR vote. So that was what we used as our benchmark. Mr. Secretary, would you please call each of the speakers to come up? Let's start with item number two.
Yes. Let's see. There were... So there were two speakers that never put down what item they were going to be speaking on. If I call your name, if you can just let me know what item, and then I can put you down for that grouping. Regent Payne? Regent Payne? Is that person here? Okay. I'll come back and ask again. The other person was Arianna Nicole Williams. Arianna Nicole Williams, is Ms. Williams here? Yes, ma'am. Oh. Item 2-8? Okay. I'm going to put you at the bottom of that one. Okay, ma'am? I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. So the first speaker for item two, Rosa Quintela.
Good afternoon, Board President Hanani. Board members and Ms. Ayvedra. My name is Rosanna Quintela, and I'm here in support of our superintendent. I did have my speech at 30... At three minutes, so now I'm going to cut it down quickly. So I'm just going to say this. Please trust me when I say this is the first time I've come up in support of anyone in front of the board. And I'm here to support Ms. Ayvedra. The reason I'm here is because she stood up, stood out, and stood in front of all of us to save our district. Let's all be honest. She had a hard job coming in. She did not inherit...
Ma'am, can you stop for just once? I'm sorry, ma'am. I think we're having issues with the clock. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh, that's okay. So I get my three minutes? Thank you, Miss Kent. I can just keep going while they fix the clock, shall we? All right, here we go. I'm a teacher librarian here at EPISD, and next year I will have achieved 20 beautiful years. I am proud to be the librarian at Douglas Elementary School. I've seen many changes throughout our district in the past 20 years, and trust me, I've seen a lot. But I've seen not too many people have the commitment, tenacity, and the strength to lead this district. I thought that this new board would probably tackle improving attendance across the district, discussing how EPISD would continue to protect our fine arts programs, which other districts have cut, strengthen our programs such as the library, and bring ideas on how to support and retain all EPISD teachers and staff. Because our children deserve the best. I've seen our superintendent, Ms. Ayvedra, stand out, stand up, and stand before our district, working on goals to save our district, empower teachers, collaborate with parents and the community, to provide our children the best education possible. And right now, instead of strengthening the foundation for the goals that the district has committed to, here we are on week two of our new board, working towards dismissing our superintendent, and I want to know why. What is the intent here? Why are we doing this? Ms. Ayvedra has worked solidly and steadfastly to try to bring our district around from the years of upheaval that had been caused in the past. This has been no easy task. We all know that. Let's be honest, she's mad to make hard, difficult decisions. She's earned my respect. She's earned the respect and trust of many EPISD employees, parents, and students. I have some old students here with me now. Ms. Ayvedra has stood up for our district and this community and moved us forward. She stands out for our district by making the hard decisions and ensuring that EPISD employees keep our jobs. She stands up in front of all of us as a leader that is committed to the success of our kids, and not just our students, but us as well. She doesn't back down, and personally, I like it. Ms. Ayvedra is an example to all the young ladies that attend EPISD. As a teacher, I have always told our students, "Follow your dreams. Don't let anyone hold you back. You can accomplish anything you set your mind to. You are amazing, and do the best for your community." She's done that. She's an example to our young ladies of what success is, and that a woman can do anything. So again, to the board, what is the intention here? To bring more upheaval back to the district? What is the intention? To dismiss a superintendent that's been doing her job? What's the point? To show our young ladies in the district that a woman can be dismissed from a job because she doesn't back down when the going gets tough? I say no. We have had too much upheaval in the past few years, and you want to create more.
That's time, ma'am.
Please stop. Give our childrens a chance at stability, at growth. Right now, EPISD is moving forward. Right now, EPISD has clear goals. Right now, EPISD is the best place to be. Let's keep doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintela.
Next speaker, Cameron Sierra. And Ms. Sierra, and I'm just reminding all the speakers, I understand 90 seconds is only half of what we've been giving in the past, but if you can please be kind enough to give everybody a chance to talk, and like President Hanani had stated, that's the same time that was given during DDR. Sorry. Thank you so much, Ms. Sierra.
Good afternoon. A little history lesson tonight. One quote about the hiring of the lawyers and the agenda item last meeting. It was something that we believed needed to be done. To my understanding, I didn't know about it until it was already posted on the board. We didn't want to violate any type of quorum, so I didn't find out about it until it was posted. Once it was posted, then I could contact district staff to find out what was going on. Exact words, I heard "we" in there several times, sounded much like a game plan of sorts. The history lesson continued to educate, and that it did. It taught me a lot more than I bargained for. It went on to describe the prior recent seat changes, the makeup of this board was a 4-3 majority, and what now looks like a 5-2 majority composition, and what the board looks like in terms of, and I quote, "what the community was asking for and what the community, I think, demanded from their voting. So at that point, the writing may have been on the wall for a certain type of employment practices, I think, in the future for a superintendent. Except our current superintendent's contract was extended through 2029. Why are we searching for a superintendent? We, working in EPISD, aren't. Three trustees who don't trust right now, and we do not trust them, are creating a case for one. Please don't fall for the narrative. The ties that bind between EPISD board trustees and the Marlin ISD superintendent during a time when we shouldn't be needing a superintendent search is the part that is quite frankly infuriating." A little further oversight, this is a witch hunt. It's tied to an agenda item just like this.
Time, ma'am.
Please don't fire her. This was a plan of attack. Don't let this be your legacy. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra.
And before I call the next speaker, I know that there is the recorded protocol that we had in play at the beginning, so we're just going to let the staff play that first. Thank you.
The district is a local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district, and board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display stability and decorum that is respectful for other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent, or public complaints. The deputy superintendent of administration is in attendance if you wish to discuss a matter with him. Please note that during public forum, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not posted on its agenda.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sheri Ryder. Thank you, Ms. Ryder.
Good afternoon, board members and Ms. Ayvedra. My name is Sheri Ryder. I am a taxpayer, a voter, an employee of EPISD, and a huge supporter of Ms. Ayvedra. Ignorance is not an excuse. In the interview with KVIA stating that we didn't know about the law firm that was hired last week, it's foul. It's not true. Ignorance is not an excuse. The previous board didn't share information with Ms. Hanani, Dr. Lovebridge, Mr. Quayar about closures. I sat here, and I listened to the presentation for the closures of schools. I thought it was lofty, but I knew it had to be done. We could not sustain these schools with less than half occupancy. The three of you were there. You listened. I heard it. Did you not have... Did you have access to this information prior to the board meeting? Of course you did. It's published. I'm sure that there were discussions with all of you prior to the meeting, because let's face it, all the employees knew about it. In fact, I knew this was coming even before Ms. Ayvedra got here. It wasn't a secret. You can't use "I asked and asked and didn't receive it" because it doesn't hold water. If I don't get information to perform my job, I don't stop till I get it.
Time, ma'am.
Again, ignorance is not an excuse, and frankly, I'm sick of hearing about nothing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Ryder.
Next speaker, Kendall Jessup.
Good evening. Can I ask the audience, if you are here for Ms. Ayvedra, can you please raise your hand? Check this out. You made this meeting at 4:00 PM to avoid all of this support. We moved mountains to get here. That speaks volumes to Ms. Ayvedra. Going back, the vote today comes down to data. Where is the data you trustees are using? Because all the data supports Ms. Ayvedra. Mr. Quayar, where have you been? You sat on that news special saying Ms. Ayvedra didn't give you a list of school closures and information on DDR. I was on the committee. Those doors are always open. Trustees are always invited. You put community members on that committee. You could have talked to them. You could have come in. You could have sounded the alarm if something was amiss, but you did not. You were not in the dark. You were idle, and do not blame that on Ms. Ayvedra. Mr. Osterland, you have an incredible stewardship. In addition to your district, you oversee, whether you know it or not, military families are going to come to you for support. Do you even know that we have an ex officio in the district? He can't lobby for Ms. Ayvedra, but he can give you facts and tell you that she put someone in that position, and that through her leadership, the relationship with the military and the school district has improved. Ms. Hanani, you stated on Facebook, you said... Let me read this. You said that we... There were some sore losers out here, and that's what you got from this, as you look down and read your notes and don't give eye contact? You didn't read... You didn't read the room. You didn't see? People were here supporting Ms. Ayvedra. Shame on you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessup.
I'd like to move for a point of order. It's 90 seconds. I'm trying to let everybody finish their statement, so I'm not going to cut you off mid-sentence, but if the sentence turns into a paragraph or a novel, we will cut you off. I'm sorry. But in terms of the point of order, please, if we need to play it again, we can play it again, but in terms of personal attacks, that's not what we're here for. In terms of information, we get that it's public forum. Please speak your mind. We're not trying to avoid any First Amendment violations or have any First Amendment violations, but in terms of the point of order, we will follow the points of order. Next speaker, Kristen Bates.
Good evening. I'll try to stick to my time. I'm Kristen Bates. I'm a parent, a military spouse, and an advocate for EPISD students. I spoke last week in support of Superintendent Ayvedra because she's our first leader in years to take our financial crisis seriously. She's leading with integrity and has a clear plan. Yet here we are again, at a hastily scheduled meeting that seems scheduled at this time to have less community input. It's not just frustrating, it's offensive. Yet despite the challenge of a 4:00 PM meeting, when there are still students sitting in classrooms, this room is full of support for our superintendent. I want to speak specifically to you, Mr. Osterland, Ms. Sutton, and Mr. Lovebridge. You represent schools with many military families, some of which are located on federal property. Mr. Osterland is a 20-year veteran. You should know the value of supporting these families. EPISD receives millions in federal aid for military-connected students, yet Fort Bliss schools are deteriorating while the board keeps open a failing campus with barely over 200 students, and now wants to incur more financial uncertainty by firing our superintendent. Why? Please stop this nonsense and listen to the community. Many of us pointed out last week the superintendent is scheduled for a performance review this summer, but at this point, does she even need one? She's already endured a week-long public inquisition with not a single substantiated claim of wrongdoing. If there were legitimate concerns, they would and should have been brought forward then. Instead, we're watching a manufactured crisis unfold over the false narrative of a voluntary resignation. It's not only disingenuous, it's damaging. And where exactly does the board plan to find the money to buy her out of their contract if this board votes to terminate her?
Time, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Vanessa Amos.
Good afternoon, Board President Hanani, board trustees, and superintendent Ayvedra. My name is Vanessa Amos, and I've been a teacher in this district for 15 years. That's a pretty significant amount of time to have seen my fair share of dysfunction, corruption, and bad decisions. I learned quickly that you don't mess with a good thing when you have it. Why y'all are hell-bent on losing Ms. Ayvedra for us is something we're all trying to figure out. After all, this board's only been together for, what, three weeks? And in that time, you supposedly have gathered enough evidence to support her removal? Why can't we see that evidence? Ms. Ayvedra, I am sorry for what is happening, and I know a lot of us feel there's more that we... There's more that we could do. Thank you for being you. Thank you for being fair, courageous, and as transparent as possible. You made me feel like... Sorry, postpartum hormones. You made me feel like my voice was truly heard and mattered, even still the same feelings in my students. You gave them opportunities they may have never had. You heard them, and you made them feel like their voice mattered. No, no, like they mattered. You wouldn't believe how many times I heard them say, "Oh, just ask Ms. Ayvedra." It just came so naturally to them. You connected with them, and although we might have not always agreed with your decisions, we knew you had the best... You had the district's best interests in mind. Because at the end of the day, isn't that what's important? That we have a leader that continues to make the tough decisions to propel our district forward, a leader that values employees or buildings. Mr. Collins, Ms. Beals, continue to fight the good fight. We're going to need it now more than ever.
Thank you, Ms. Amos.
Amanda Bettis. Is Ms. Bettis here? Just want to make sure. Okay. One more time, Amanda Bettis. Myra Bettis.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Ms. Ayvedra. My name is Myra Bettis, and I am an instructional coach at Brown Middle School. This is the first time I've attended a board meeting. Normally, I keep my head down, focus on my job, do everything I can to support my students and teachers, but what's happening now has reached a point where I can no longer stay silent. To those board members pushing for drastic change, you've succeeded in one thing. Getting the attention of people like me who are now watching, we are listening, and from this point forward, we will hold you accountable for your actions. I've always believed that if someone is being removed from a position, there should be a clear reason. Yet I stand here before today... Before you today, I've heard none proposed for the dismissal of Ms. Ayvedra. If there is a legitimate reason, then say so. Treat us like professionals and adults that we are. Have the decency to look us in the eye and be honest with us. If you know something we don't, share it. Who knows? We may agree with you. But your silence implies that there is no valid justification, and that is why I can no longer look the other way. I'm asking you to think about the implications of your decisions today. We are doing our best to finish the school year on a strong and positive note. Our campuses are celebrating the hard work and growth and accomplishment of our students and staff, yet instead of focusing on that progress, we are weighed down by the anxiety and confusion caused by this situation. If we believe this change was best for our schools and students, we would be the first to support it.
That's time, ma'am.
The fact that so many of us are speaking out in defense of Ms. Ayvedra should tell you everything you need to know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please do the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Bettis.
Corey Song.
Forgive me. I'm going to cut through the niceties because my time is cut. I have no respect for anybody who doesn't have respect for the job. Your pride in your work shows in your actions from the very first day of the job. Trustee Sutton, Love, Osterman, and Queller, from your first meeting of this board, you wasted our money on Lamar. Not an idea, not people, but an old building that needed to ride off into the sunset. But today, and every new day, is your chance to do the right thing. Ms. Hanani, you haven't been in that chair a month and you're already burning down the house. Any honest adult strives to work side by side with their colleagues, respects the gravity of their responsibilities, and takes to heart input from the people that they serve. From your first meeting as board president, you've demonstrated disdain, disrespect, and indifference. You're engaged in a coup with the superintendent right now before the new fiscal year. You tried it last week and teachers told you not to do it, veterans told you not to do it, taxpayers told you not to do it, businessmen told you not to do it, our own mayor told you not to do it. Here we are, one week later, watching this procedural train wreck again. The difference now is that you've shown your hand. People are talking and TEA is investigating, but the selfishness can end today. There's time to meld our ideas and work with the community instead of ramming your ideas through. Ms. Hanani, if you are so bold as to resist your own urges of power, you can stop this disaster before it becomes your legacy.
That's time, Mr. Song.
Trustee Sutton, Love, Osterman, Queller, you don't have to be party to this dereliction of ethics.
Mr. Song, I'm sorry. That's time, sir. I'm sorry, Mr. Song. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Or else chaos and instability will follow.
Thank you, Mr. Song. Sorry. Thank you, sir. Jeremiah Vincent Velasco.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Superintendent Sayavedra. My name is Jeremiah Velasco and I stand before you today, not as an adult with a title, but as the voice of the very people your decisions affect the most, the students. What I saw last week was truly disheartening. I saw how dysfunctional and divisive our district is as it's facing rapid public distrust. As a student, I get to see firsthand the conditions of our schools and we still show up, study and work hard, knowing and trusting that the adults at the top are doing the same by fighting for us. But right now, we now question, who is truly putting the students first and how did we end up here again? Right now, this feels like it's a struggle for authority rather than for a plan to push our district forward. Now, let me be clear, Superintendent Sayavedra isn't perfect, but none of us are and who are we to judge when we ourselves are imperfect? Leadership is never perfect and very few get the calling to serve in such a pivotal leadership role. You all were elected to serve the people and not your personal interests. When leadership looks like politics, it doesn't move us forward, it erodes trust and confidence. To Ms. Sayavedra, whether your tenure ends today or not, I want you to hear from me that we recognize your hard work and your class during a time of conflict and although some may not see it, I confide and know that history will. So as I wrap up my statement, this isn't about contracts or who has more power, it's about the type of district you want to leave behind because young people like myself will sit in those seats in just a matter of years.
Thank you, Mr. Velasco.
So put ego, politics, and division aside and redirect your focus back to the students.
Thank you, Mr. Velasco. Next speaker, Laura Black. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm not as passionate as everybody here, but I will say as a parent, Ms. Sayavedra was at the ROTC scholarship, the ROTC end-of-year ceremonies for Franklin. My daughter was the unarmed drill team and every year she was there. Nobody else was there on this board. She was there. And my daughter was an at-risk student and I'm sorry for how this might make everybody feel, but she was the product of a rape, which made me have to have very, I had a very special circumstances. So my daughter got help when Ms. Sayavedra stepped into office and she got $120,000 scholarship to go to one of the most prestigious aeronautical universities in this country, the world, Embry-Riddle. She was a private pilot before her senior year. She now has her instrument rating and she's getting her commercial. Ms. Sayavedra, that was you. It wasn't me. That was you. That you helping the leadership of EPISD made a huge difference. I'm also a teacher and I have the best administration that I've ever had. I've always had good, but you helped leaders thrive. Thank you, Ms. Sayavedra.
Next speaker is Bernadina Inungaray Fitz. Bernadina Inungaray Fitz. Next speaker, Sarah Noemi Rodriguez. Sarah Noemi Rodriguez. Next speaker, Thomas Zavala. Mr. Zavala, Thomas Zavala. Next speaker, Minerva Torres Shelton.
Good afternoon. So as a former military person, police officer, and FBI for 21 years, I am here primarily as a taxpayer and because this district belongs to the people, not to politics. Let us be real, this does not look like it's about a performance issue. It looks like politics. There's so many unanswered questions, but I'll go into the main thing of my presentation. The most concerning part until Sunday, the KVIA interview, the public had not heard nothing, no facts, no interviews, no real answers, and even then, the board president didn't even show up. Let me be clear, leadership shows up, especially when it's uncomfortable. And trustee Quayar, in the same interview, you said that the superintendent serves at the pleasure of the board, that you can hire and fire them, but let me remind you, you were elected to serve us, the people, not your friends. And at the last meeting, the majority of speakers, and I'm hearing the same thing right now, support the superintendent, so I hope you all remember that when you cast your next vote. Superintendent Sayavedra inherited a financial crisis and made tough decisions. Real leadership isn't always popular, but is necessary. This is bigger than one person. It's about the trust and protecting the public dollars.
Sorry, Ms. Shelton.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton.
Kimberly Villanueva. Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Villanueva and this is my 30th year with EPISD. Trustee Hanani stated that her goal is always to serve the best interests of our students, staff, and community, and that commitment guides every decision this board makes. As a community member, a faculty member, and a parent of two EPISD alumni, I am unclear as to why the board has suddenly abandoned the direction in which Mrs. Sayavedra was leading us. During Mrs. Sayavedra's tenure with EPISD, I have not always agreed with every decision she has made. However, I have been present for the tough decisions and difficult cuts that she has been burdened with and I do support the way in which she has navigated the district into being more streamlined and efficient. Additionally, we have seen Mrs. Sayavedra's initiatives lead to higher student achievement. If your goal is to serve the interests of students, staff, and community, then how is causing all this upheaval amongst the board, the school district, and the community our best interest? Up until now, there has been no cause given for the termination of Mrs. Sayavedra. I believe that firing her without cause is an injustice and the complete opposite of serving the best interest. So whose interest is this serving? The way you presented this makes it feel 100% self-serving for you and a few of the board members. If you expect us to get behind this, you will have to be more transparent about what it is you feel is the cause for termination. Additionally, Hanani has stated that this matter falls under confidential personnel deliberations and she is unable to comment further. This is a very convenient way to hide personal interests and agendas. Trustee Call put his name and reputation on the line to be transparent at the last board meeting. That is the very definition of self-serving, serving the community first.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Villanueva.
Next speaker, Max Grossman. Mr. Grossman.
Superintendent, trustees, thank you. Here is what is happening. The next fiscal year begins in only 28 days and trustees Hanani, Love, Quayar are hoping to convince the new trustees, Sutton and Osterland, to fire Superintendent Sayavedra at the worst possible moment. That is like dismissing the captain of an ocean liner that is navigating the Arctic surrounded by icebergs. You are facing an eight-figure deficit and have no budget for fiscal year 2026, which starts July 1, and you are going to fire the superintendent, who is the best financial manager at EPISD in more than 20 years. That is irrational. The superintendent is scheduled for her performance review on June 18th, so why would you ask trustees Sutton and Osterland, who were elected only one month ago today, to fire her when she is set to be evaluated in only 15 days and they hardly know her? It is obvious that trustees Hanani, Love, and Quayar are totally committed to firing the superintendent and without good cause, as defined in the Texas Education Code. So I am appealing to trustees Sutton and Osterland, please, listen to your constituents and act responsibly to keep EPISD solvent and prevent a TEA takeover. Do not fire our superintendent. Mr. Quayar, you told Mark Ross of KVIA on ABC 7 Extra, "We're not going to raid the fund balance," quote unquote, "we're not going to raid the fund balance." You're going to eat those words within three weeks. I can promise you that.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman.
Gregory Bain. Mr. Bain.
Thank you. Lack of transparency, emotion over facts, cronyism instead of results. That's what we're hearing. That's what we're seeing. We're not seeing the cause as to the potential release of the superintendent. Let's talk ethics. Mr. Osterland, I know you know about ethics. Doing what's right is hard, but we owe it once again to our students, their parents, and everyone in this room who took time out of their schedules and rearranged their schedule at the last minute to meet this hastily-called meeting at a most inconvenient time. You owe it to them to do what's morally and ethically right. It's hard, but you must do it for them. It is about our district, it is about our students, their parents, and all the concerned citizens, not yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bain.
Sorry about that. Next speaker, Nerful Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, thank you, sir.
First of all, I think cutting to 90 seconds is referred to in the area of law as prior restraint without notice, but I join the teachers and the speakers before me by reference incorporate what they say. I oppose the firing of Superintendent Diana Saavedra without cause. I know she is the first female Mexican-American superintendent. I do so because I believe it's a ruse, employing the kill-the-messenger tactic. You unfairly blame superintendent because she brought you bad news. First, a declining enrollment at EPISD, that's a fact. A budget shortfall, that's a fact. And she proposed a remedy of closing eight schools. It's now seven because Lamar came back. The ruse, according to the El Paso Inc. June 1 issue, trustee Daniel Call is the source, you chairwoman, Hanani, already has her former boss, Daryl Hanson, superintendent and mailing independent school district, as Ms. Sayavedra's replacement. This is now how we select a school superintendent. I think if we take a look at the EPISD history, we see a much more sinister cause behind that. It was in 1984 that the case of Sierra versus CPA SD was decided.
And that's time, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
My last comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
I urge the trustees not to fire Ms. Sayavedra.
Thank you, sir. Monica Benjamin. Ms. Benjamin.
Superintendent and trustees, there are a few things that I wanted to touch on these 90 seconds. One glaring item is still the unidentified reason for releasing the superintendent. The closest we've heard was trustee Quayar stating that the DR process, that you lacked data and you had questions for the staff and you were not receiving whatever that data is. Your job really is to make sure that that data is correct and to make sure that the staff is providing you with the data and going back to your neighborhoods and making sure that the data is correct. And I guess I find fault in you all for not doing that. If the numbers are not right, it comes down to you. You are the elected official. You are the ones that are supposed to be making sure that the information is correct for your own neighborhoods. And I guess if you can't commit yourself to that work or commit yourself to that, then I think you should resign and afford it to someone else that will do the work and, thank you guys, and be the trustee of the information. Not only have you failed to provide a reason, you've also shown that you have...
And that's time, ma'am.
Oh, wow, that was quick.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin.
Karen Galanter. Ms. Galanter.
Board members and Superintendent Sayavedra, please excuse me, but I feel like I'm experiencing a bad case of déjà vu. I'm sure that I was just here this last week with dozens of other constituents speaking about the inappropriate decision to prevent the closure of Lamar Elementary and on behalf of the positive leadership of Superintendent Sayavedra. Teachers and El Paso citizens stood before you four hours and praised her attempts to correct the downward trajectory of this district. And instead of listening and representing your constituents as you were voted into office to do, this board has doubled down on this unwarranted crusade to remove Superintendent Sayavedra from EPISD. To constantly have your position in jeopardy adds unnecessary stress to an already taxing profession and frankly, it is unfair of any of you who have not been teachers to demand that of those that are in the classroom right now. The main issue at hand is the strong-arm tactics that board president and vice president are implementing in order to try and remove Superintendent Sayavedra. At last week's meeting, former president of the Board of Managers, Dean Margot, warned that he is seeing similarities between what caused a TEA takeover in 2012 and this current board, and instead of heeding his warning, you are doubling down on this crusade, this vendetta, to remove Superintendent Sayavedra, a superintendent who has not been accused of any crime, who has not been investigated, and who you keep trying to force out but can't seem to come up with any reason. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter.
Ivan Trujillo Reyes. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Ms. Sayavedra, ST members of the school board staff, and members of our community. My name is Ivan Trujillo Reyes and I am an instructional... My name is Ivan Trujillo Reyes, and I am on instruction of Coach Animan Elementary, one of our closing schools. I stand before you today to speak in strong support of our superintendent, Miss Sayavedra. I am deeply concerned about the potential for her contract to be terminated without a valid reason. And I urge the board to consider the immense progress our district has made under her leadership before making any such decisions. In the years that Miss Sayavedra has been at the helm of the district, we have seen clear, measurable improvements in numerous areas. Our students are benefiting from a more focused and effective educational environment. Our employees are thriving, and we're making strides towards building a brighter future for this entire community. First and foremost, let's talk about the fiscal responsibility under Miss Sayavedra's leadership. She has ensured that our district operates efficiently, carefully prioritizing resources where they will have the most impact, whether that's investing in student success, supporting our teachers, or maintaining facilities that are conducive to a learning environment, including making the difficult decision of closing schools. Every dollar is spent thoughtfully and strategically, and there has been no waste of taxpayer money. Terminating Miss Sayavedra's contract at this stage without a valid, transparent reason would be a direct waste of taxpayers' money. It could result in unnecessary costs, including severance, at cost of searching for a new superintendent, and the inevitable disruption to the district's progress. It's important to recognize the harm that could come from such a decision, not just to Miss Sayavedra.
Sorry, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo Reyes.
Mr. Rossmore?
We'll skip the formalities. What you're about to do behind closed doors is wrong. It is wrong on every level. It is wrong from every angle an honorable person can look at it from. What you're about to do behind closed doors is dishonorable. So first, I ask you not to do it, and your faces tell me you're not even listening. Second, the acts you are about to commit behind are without honor, and so are the people who commit them. Miguel de Cervantes once said, "A man without honor is worse than dead." And yes, so do the honorable thing. If you're going to do this, do it out here in the sunlight so the public can watch and see what dastardly deeds Miss Sayavedra has done. And if they are respectfully what trustee Cuellar alleged on ABC Extra, then it is a nothing burger and hurt feelings on his part, not grounds for termination by any stretch of anybody's imagination. So do the honorable-- You all have the ability to be honorable. I had to cut some time out. But it takes strength, and that takes being honest with yourself. Prove to me that honor is not dead and buried in the EPISD boardroom. Prove to me this is not just another one of the dreaded Sodergher. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Kara Cervantes. Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Sayavedra. My name is Kara Cervantes, and I serve on the executive board for El Paso AFT. I stand before you today to speak on behalf of the members who have reached out to me personally with concerns and either could not be here this afternoon or are afraid of retaliation. Tonight, I urge each of you to pause and reflect on the weight of your responsibility. The decision to terminate a superintendent, especially without cause, is not only disruptive but dangerous. It risks undermining trust, destabilizing leadership, and sending a chilling message to those who have dedicated themselves to the betterment of our schools. Even though we did not see eye to eye on several issues over her tenure, Miss Sayavedra has demonstrated commitment, competence, and care for students, educators, and families. If there are specific concerns, the public deserves transparency. But absent cause, this move appears political, and politics should never come before the best interests of our students. I ask each of you to consider what message this sends to the community, to our educators, and to our children. We need stability, not uncertainty. We need leadership, not division. And we need courage, especially from those elected, to lead with integrity. So please do not take this vote lightly, as this decision is one that has immense repercussions. Vote to retain the superintendent. Do what is right for our schools, not what is easy or politically expedient. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cervantes.
Joseph Sam Armijo, Mr. Armijo?
My name is Sam Armijo, and I'm a retired General Electric executive, and I make that point because I have dealt with termination of employees. During my career, I have fired employees and managers who have demonstrated dishonesty, incompetence, lack of integrity, or who have created a climate of fear within their organizations. The testimony by last week's speakers made it very clear that none of these characteristics apply to Superintendent Sayavedra. However, it is distressing that many of these toxic behaviors are being exhibited by some members of this board. I urge the board, in particular the new members, please do not tarnish your reputations by signing on to a vendetta orchestrated by some members of the board. Demonstrate your integrity and your independence, and frankly, your honor, by voting against President Hanani's scheme to terminate superintendent the superintendent without due process and without just cause. I have one minute. Turn around and look at the sign, "El Paso ISD Starts With Us," not with you.
Thank you, Mr. Armijo.
Next speaker, Bethany Rivetta Molinar.
I'm an native El Paso and EPISD parent, alumni, and a leader in the member of the neighborhoods directly affected by the Lamar closures. For 12 years, I've lived and worked in the Lamar neighborhoods, dedicating my life to working towards a thriving community. I understand that some decisions are about to be made in close session, and I want to share what I have personally witnessed in the hopes that what I share may help inform those decisions. This school year, I witnessed little and unclear communication about potential closures in the Lamar area until decisions were almost final. I witnessed pamphlets passed out with conflicting and false numbers. When I asked you, Ms. Sayavedra, why Mesita has two campuses, two administrations, additional bus routes for a specialized program that is never performed as well as Lamar, my questions were ignored and sidestepped. I watched Lamar parents plead for answers from you, Ms. Sayavedra, only to receive similar non-answers and sidesteps. Ms. Hanani, when the closures were made public, I saw you organize a meeting for Lamar parents in a place accessible to them, and I saw this because I was at that meeting too. You listened and asked two questions, what are your thoughts, and how did you hear about the closures? I saw you listen to parents, students, and teachers across my community, and as a constituent, you answered my calls. Ms. Sutton, I saw you ask hard questions as a parent and educator. Prior to running for your seat, I saw you chase down your district's former representative for answers at a DR meeting. She left early. Your community rallied for your election because they have personally witnessed your dedication, compassion, and intelligence, and you've made yourself available to answer my own questions too. Mr. Leveridge, you've asked the hard questions. I've seen you knocking on doors, calling out inequity, even when it wasn't politically convenient. You two have made yourself available to answer my questions no matter how long your day. And Mr. Osterland, I attended your first community forum where you were asked tough questions. Your community's support, built through your nonprofit work, was evidenced as a rally by marching in the Northeastern Parade. So I know why you're elected, for a reason. I support you, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Molinar.
Next speaker, Wayling Soon. Ms. Soon? Yes, oh, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Sayavedra. I speak as a concerned parent. I'm here to voice my deep concern about this board's effort to force Superintendent Sayavedra to resign. This is not just unjust. It's shortsighted and threatens the stability and progress of our district. Superintendent Sayavedra is the first Latina superintendent in EPISD history. That matters. In just two years, she has led with clarity, purpose, and a commitment to equity during one of the most challenging transitions in our district's history. She is not under ethical investigation, nor has she been accused of incompetence. She is being targeted because this board is overstepping its role and attempting to micromanage district operations. But your role is governance and accountability, not day-to-day interference. Research shows that high superintendent turnover, especially for political reasons, disrupts district improvement and harms student outcomes. You don't strengthen a district by destabilizing it. Some have cited that school closure costs more than expected, but that's only half the story. Costs ballooned because of poor post-closure planning, which reflects shared responsibility. Removing the superintendent now only worsens the problem. The real solution is consistent leadership to carry this complex work forward.
Thank you, Ms. Soon. That's time. Thank you, ma'am.
One last sentence.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
And thank you, and for the sake of our students and our future, please vote and make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soon.
Ashley Valdez Schmudlock. Thank you, ma'am.
Impropriety is impropriety itself, at least based upon our level of being up here. We should be higher than the standard. We should be above bar. That was stated by Mr. Cuellar on November 19, 2024, regarding the former board majority. The preliminary findings of the equity audit that we heard about on that meeting has come out, and I reviewed the information. You guys were supposed to have that meeting today. Have you guys read that information yet, all of you, Ms. Sutton, Mr. Osterland? I suggest you look over it. Whatever the reason behind closed doors, I urge the board, especially the new trustees, to ensure that their actions and reasoning behind them surpass any hint of impropriety. Reflect on the equity audit's preliminary findings, which strongly support Superintendent Sayavedra and her entire administration. This decision risks derailing numerous positive district initiatives. Consider the data showcasing the outstanding work under Miss Sayavedra's leadership for all students. I encourage trustee Sutton and trustee Osterland to pause and review the information. As Ms. Sutton, you previously advised during the school closures, pause and review that information, because the audit appears to eliminate the district's successes. Ahead lies challenges like the voucher program, a tough bond request, and potential further divestment.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Schmudlock.
Next speaker is Lori Marie Howtalan. Did I pronounce that right? I'm sorry. How do you pronounce it, ma'am? That way I know.
For the record, it's Dr. Lori Howtalan.
Howtalan, thank you, doctor.
I'm resident of District 6. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I've never done this before. I want to read from the responsibilities of leadership statement on the EPISD board website, specifically this sentence. "As the district's elected leaders, trustees represent community expectations as they chart the direction of educational programs and services and establish the standard by which success is measured." We recently had an election. That is why a number of you are sitting here today. And in my view, as I look at 901 votes for trustee and President Hanani, 709 votes for Dr. Leveridge, 659 votes for Ms. Sutton, trustee Sutton, and 634 votes for trustee Osterland, I feel like the board is-- Some members of the board are operating as if this vote was your referendum. But I read to you, "The trustees represent community expectations. Here is your community." So, Dr. Leveridge, your comment following the May election was, I think, the big concern we should all have as El Pasoans is the low turnout. We are turning out now. We are paying attention.
And that's time, ma'am. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howtalan.
Next speaker, Betsy Hadad.
Thank you. Dear members of the board, my name is Betsy Hadad. I am the president of Tippin PTA and here today to represent the growing concern in our community, addressing your lack of transparency and wanting to let Ms. Sayavedra go of her duty to EPISD. You discussed and reviewed this very agenda item last week and heard from a number of concerned community and district members. Calling for the same item a week later after hearing so many in the community, did you not listen? Or did you just care not to listen? We, as a Tippin PTA community, are concerned that you have shown no reason in wanting to fire Ms. Sayavedra. You know she is a superintendent who has shown up for this whole district and is actively working to save it before TEA can take over. Is that what you want? Your actions these past few weeks have been disruptive, reckless, and have shown you don't care for EPISD students, staff, and administrators, only yourselves. As a parent of a very active community, or as parents of a very active community, this is alarming and unjust behavior. Our community wants to know the atrocities Ms. Sayavedra has committed that warrants the instability of the district will be placed in with her termination. Wasn't her contract just renewed last year with no reservation? What has happened since? If you let Ms. Sayavedra go, what is your plan to pull out of this debt? You say you're not happy with school closing, with the closing of campuses, but what is your plan? Let us know. These are our questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hadad.
Next speaker, Michelle Corral. Ms. Corral?
My name is Michelle Corral, and I proudly serve as the principal at Douglas Elementary. Today, we're seeing a different-- I spoke last week, and I return tonight because this moment still matters. The future of EPISD is at a turning point, and we cannot afford to turn backward. Three and a half years ago, EPISD was struggling. Today, we're seeing a different EPISD, one grounded in clarity, structure, and shared purpose. Trust is being rebuilt, not through slogans, but through steady leadership and aligned systems. Superintendent Sayavedra brought focus where it is needed most. She raised expectations, and she supported us in meeting them. She challenges us, keeps us focused, and leads with heart. That's not control. It's leadership we grow from. And we believe in her leadership, because she believes in the work and she believes in us. Because when we-- Because when strong leadership sharpens principals, principals sharpen teachers, and students thrive. It's a chain of excellence. Iron sharpens iron. At Douglas, our teacher, staff, and I work side by side every single day, and we do it for one reason: our students. They are our why. Every plan, every long day, every thought, every decision we make is with them in mind, and our families trust us to do right by their children. We support our teachers by advocating their work, that they need to succeed not just in word but in action. I know I speak for many of my fellow principals when I say, "We feel the alignment, we see the difference, and we're doing the work shoulder to shoulder." Board, I say this: do not mistake public noise for professional truth. Acting quickly is not the same as leading wisely, and do not tear down what we've worked so hard to build.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Corral.
Next speaker is Julie Chavez. Ms. Chavez?
Forgive me, I'm slow right now. Good evening. My name is Julie Chavez, and I'm the proud principal of Moy Elementary. I want to begin by expressing my appreciation for the heartfelt comments that were shared before me, and I'll do my best not to repeat what has already been eloquently and passionately stated. I didn't attend EPISD schools, like the well-spoken young man who spoke earlier, but I was raised in the district. My mother became the district receptionist when I was just nine months old. She served EPISD faithfully for decades, until 2021, when cancer took her life, just before she was set to retire as the secretary to one of our cabinet members. I grew up in EPISD's hallways-- I grew up in EPISD's hallways. I listened from the front desk. I sat in the shadows of boardrooms. I watched this district's history unfold in real time. At home, I heard stories, some filled with pride and great leadership, others heavy with concerns, stories of excellence and stories of corruption. Corruption that went unchecked until federal agents intervened. I watched my mother take copious notes, speak up when it mattered, and quietly celebrate the rare few who refused to stay silent or, or stand back. Many of them are still in this room. What I learned from watching them and from her is this: what is right always wins. Their courage and hers, my mom's, is why I stand here today. When I began my career in EPISD, my mother was proud, but she warned me in education, power often overshadows what is right. She also, before her death, shared with me that it is not in how we, it's not our titles or applause, it is in, it is in the lives we live that lives our legacy. So my question, last sentence. My question is. My question is, her legacy, Diana Sayavedra's, already wins.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
And then just as a point of order, I'm trying to give everybody as much time to finish her statement, but if it's a whole new statement, then we are going to cut you off. I'm sorry. Next speaker, Bill Hicks. Mr. Hicks.
Good afternoon, board. First, I would like to thank you all for your service. Each of you are public servants. It's a very hard thing to be a public servant, to stand up with honor and integrity, to stand up for the, for the students, for the taxpayers, for our community. It's a very difficult thing to do. However, it is a very important task that you have taken on as public servants. I have been serving this community for 28 years as an attorney, as a former district judge, as a former district attorney, but most importantly, as a father of a beautiful little boy who attends an EPISD school. I stand up today to tell you one thing. I urge you, I urge you to be methodical, to be slow, and to know what you're doing. If anything, the response that you have had in two different meetings from the community should tell you that you should slow down, that you should think about what you're doing, that you should be methodical, and that you should realize that moving too fast is not what this community wants you to do. This community wants you to be responsible, wants you to be responsive, and wants you to serve with honesty and integrity. It takes honesty and integrity to stand up and say, hold on, let's slow down, let's make sure we're doing the right thing. That's your job. Please do it.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Next speaker is Carola Chavez. Yes, yeah, thank you. All right, thank you, ma'am.
I am a new special education teacher at EPISD. I am here to speak about the tremendous support I have received under Mrs. Sayavedra's leadership. It is my understanding, after speaking to several special education teachers who have been with the district for years, that the kind of support given to special ed teachers now is very different than what they received for so many years under different leadership. I have felt incredibly supported and can't imagine starting a career as a special education teacher without the kind of support that was afforded to me. Like I said, I've heard from several veteran EPISD teachers that they've felt, as they've never felt, supported by the program until Mrs. Sayavedra became superintendent. It is because of her and her leadership that a new special education teacher such as me has a chance to make it. I've been a teacher for a very short time, and I have lost count of many times I felt like it's all just too much. It's an incredibly overwhelming feeling to have so many tasks to complete, IEPs to write, ARPs to attend, COSSs to finalize, and not even talking about the time spent in the classroom with modified instruction and challenging and sometimes extremely aggressive behaviors. But every single time I've asked for help or additional training or just even time to complete tasks, the SPECT department is quick to assist me in absolutely any way that they can, and I know the department wouldn't approve any of this help unless given that freedom to do so. And that comes from the top, that comes from you, Mrs. Sayavedra. I am grateful to work for a district where its leader acknowledges my special needs students as people and not as numbers on a state test. I speak as a teacher and as a mother of a special education student in this district. I am my nonverbal daughter's advocate, I am my special needs student's advocate. They deserve quality education given by highly trained and supportive teachers. Every time that support is given to teachers, whether new or veteran, the closer my daughter and every special needs student in this district get to, get to have a shot at life.
And that's time, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
Next speaker, Israel Iribali. Ms. Iribali.
Thank you, trustees. So I was fortunate enough to be on this board until about two, three weeks ago. So this idea that something's happened in the tenure of Superintendent Sayavedra to terminate doesn't exist. We can't go into personnel issues, but we can talk generally about what exists and what doesn't exist. So what do we measure the superintendent off of? Academic outcomes. We're seeing double-digit gains in several of our high schools across the district, and we see some that are rising to the occasion with the support that you see behind us in our, in our principals. We saw four to six percent growth from grades three to eight. More students took Algebra I tests this year than any test before, and we maintained consistent. We did not drop, even though they're testing in eighth grade. So in my book, Diana passes the academics test. We're seeing growth. Equity. There's four bright spots from the presentation that y'all missed from canceling today's meeting, which was strategic funding model, staffing with equity in mind, and full-time parental engagement liaisons for high needs campuses. And then last one was community collaboration. The superintendent's done that. Check. Climate and culture. Heck, look behind you. That's climate and culture right there. This, these are staff members fighting every day for what they believe in. Okay, so I go really quick. Two points that came from the equity audit that was pushed so hard by many of you guys up there. Eighty-nine percent of families say their child's school supports academic success. Eighty-nine percent. Eighty-four percent of staff feel their work contributed positively to student learning. Climate and culture? Check. And the last one is be finances. When we did the seven percent increase for our teachers, thank you, Ms. Sayavedra, for doing that, which was historic in our district, there was a 30-plus million-dollar deficit. Today, at the presentation that, again, was canceled last minute, it was 10.99. I think she passes that as well. So what has changed, trustees? It's not this, it's everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Iribali.
Next speaker, Margaret Gallardo. Ms. Gallardo.
Good afternoon, President Hanani, board members, Ms. Sayavedra. I am Margaret Gallardo. Today, I do not come to speak to you wearing the hats I normally wear. I am here speaking on behalf of self. A 62-year community member of the Austin High School feeder pattern, there's been an awful lot of noise lately and a lot of ugly and disturbing, disturbing adjectives. And yes, a lot of noise and speculation, but not too much substance. Conversations, news reports, and impressive soliloquies have focused on adults and sides, this side, that side. The important team has been completely overlooked, team EPISD, team teacher, but most importantly, team student. Voters trust that you all will work for EPISD, and all voices, no matter geography, will be heard and validated. I know that you will always do what is best for EPISD, even if I don't agree. I trust that no matter how much noise and orchestrated chaos is created, you will remain steadfast to the jobs that you all were elected to do. So there is no way for us to go with, up with the talent that EPISD has. That is, if the grownups that are supposed to be leading us get out of their own way and allow you to do the work. So now, it's up to you, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Sayavedra. Finish the job that you started before abandoning ship and not making good on your promises. To the board, lick your wounds and move on. Help make EPISD the destination district.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Gallardo.
Sorry. Next speaker, John Auger. Mr. Auger.
Board members, Superintendent Sayavedra, got to say it pretty, pretty, pretty close. Last week, I didn't even know it. It's now two weeks in a row that I've been here at a school board meeting, and could I get a different vote than they had earlier? How many of you are here to support her being fired? One. That's almost the equivalent of the number of people that voted for all of you up there on the board. That should say something. Look at everybody here supporting the superintendent, but you have one supporter here for the board members. That's amazing. Here's kind of your agenda sheet as to what's supposed to be happening as far as the different action items. There's no action item summary for what we're doing right now. There's nothing at all listed, nothing posted. So is there nothing? Is there no impact on funding? Is there no future or ongoing needs? Is there no development plan? Well, yes, we all know there's, there's none of that. Now to get on to my actual comments. Here we come for the second week to support the superintendent. You're about to discuss legal issues. I love how you state that. This is not legal issues. This is the life of the superintendent that you're referring to. What you discuss back is likely to be 100% irrelevant, as for the second week in a row, you're going to consult with legal representation to remove a person to who all accounts is doing an amazing job. Her review is due this month. What does this review say about her performance? We don't know. Let's do it.
And that's time, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Auger.
Next speaker, Margie Lozano. Ms. Lozano.
What is a fallacy? A fallacy is an error in reasoning that makes an argument invalid and can be persuasive but misleading. An example would be appeal to authority. This fallacy relies on the opinion of an authority figure who may not be credible in the relevant field. An example would be the head of the local school board thinking they can have a superintendent fired just because they are now board president. And I quote from Ms. Hanani's comment to El Paso Matters. "We are focused on real change that puts students' outcomes first." How is the removal of Ms. Sayavedra going to do that? Why can't you put your time and energy in helping teachers? They are the driving force in putting student outcomes first. A saying my mom would tell me while I was growing up was, "Dime con quién te juntas y te diré quién eres," which signifies that the people you associate with reflect your character and actions. Trustee Sutton and Overland, you have not been here long enough to know how a school district works, how hard Ms. Sayavedra works. Give yourself the chance to get to know her, to work with her, to know the going-ons here at EPISD. My last words are for you, Ms. Sayavedra. You are a great leader who has had to make difficult choices. You are a true embodiment of what a Gryffindor is: brave and courageous and passionate and above all, willing to do, willing to stand up for what is right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano.
Lauren Corsi. Ms. Corsi.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I have never done this before, so thank you, and thank you for the lesson in democracy that my fourth grader who wanted to go to the pool is learning right now. I'm here simply because it hit me recently that you don't really know a good thing until it's gone. I'm here because I'm really grateful for the high-quality public education my daughter has received at EPISD. Thank you to all the teachers here. Under the current superintendent, she and other students have had excellent, full-time teachers, not long-term substitutes, reasonable class sizes, access to free breakfast and lunch, and programs like Spanish and Chinese language instruction. As a taxpaying parent, I would also encourage you to take the district's financial crisis seriously. Please, for the sake of El Paso parents and our children, ensure EPISD remains solvent and independent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corsi.
Andrew Vailu. Vailu. I'm sorry about that, sir. Vailu. Is that correct?
It's all right.
There we go. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Sayavedra and board, board members. You know, I agree with everything that, everything that's been said about Ms. Sayavedra in terms of supporting her as our superintendent, but this is a direct conversation with you, Ms. Sayavedra. As a retired EPISD employee of 35 years and as a retired principal, I honestly say that the last two years of my career were remarkable because of you. I'm speaking directly to you. When, when a superintendent visits your school two weeks into the job, when a superintendent walks your classrooms within weeks of her job, when the superintendent attends our diathlon, our first ever at Powell, that spoke volumes. Okay? And so I, so I think I speak on behalf of all retired principals, all current principals too, that it is because of you that we were allowed, I certainly was allowed, and I know the principals today are allowed to lead with leadership. This is about the heart and soul of a good person, a person who does not deserve to lose her job. Okay? And at the end of the day, all of us are much more than our title. She is the superintendent, but by golly, she's so much more. She is a beautiful soul who has made it her life's work to make it better for students, staffs, and teachers and principals of this district. God bless you, Ms. Sayavedra.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vail.
Christina Valdez. Ms. Valdez. Christina Valdez. Ariana Nicole Williams.
Good afternoon, President Hanani, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Sayavedra. My name is Ariana Williams, and I'm student body president at my high school. And today, I am here to express my strong support for our superintendent. Every day, when I walk through the entrance of my school, I am greeted by the three pillars of inspire, empower, and thrive. And I am reminded of just how often Ms. Sayavedra has empowered me to use my voice. I have worked alongside the superintendent for two years now with Super Sac, and not once has she stifled our voice or our opinions. It's actually been quite the opposite. She has inspired us to speak up for what we believe, and not only does she truly listen, but she follows up with us. She has proven time and time again just how much she believes in us as students and letting our voices truly be heard. Just this year, she has had us speak in front of superintendents from across the state where we were part, where we were part of, sorry, where we, we spoke on district initiatives and ways that we improved our campuses. And she just let us share how hard each of us worked at our campuses alongside her, our superintendent, Ms. Diana Sayavedra. And I can say countless other students disagree with what has been put on the line for our superintendent. So with that being said, let student voices, our voices, be the change needed for your decision. Closing up, this is directly for you, Ms. Diana Sayavedra. Thank you so much for what you have done, putting the work and dedication for our district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker for item two is Jose Rodriguez. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Madam President, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I don't know any of you. I don't know Ms. Sayavedra. I am here as a taxpayer, live right nearby here, and I wanted to come and speak about what I have seen in the press and heard out there about this whole controversy. I'm not here to speak for or against Ms. Sayavedra. I don't, I don't know what her performance has been, and it would not be appropriate for me. But I did serve 20 years as your elected county attorney. I did serve 10 years as your elected state senator, and I've been around a lot of meetings and around a lot of governing bodies, different types of governing bodies. And yours is one of the most challenging of them all, because you don't even get paid, but you have the responsibility and the charge. but you have the responsibility and the charge of making sure that opportunities are offered to all our children. So I commend all of you for that. What I am disappointed about is the kinds of comments that suggest, for example, that the TEA may be taking over the district just simply because a new board has come in and has started to make some decisions. That is the furthest thing from the truth. I was there when the TA took the board before. So what I want to tell you is, I'm disappointed in the kinds of reaction that we have here from these folks.
Sir, you can finish your statement, and then it's time.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And do whatever is, in your mind, the best for the children.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
And I'm going to ask for another point of order. If you've noticed, I've given everybody time, whether it's for, against, or neutral. So the members of the public, if you can please, let us call time. We'll finish the statement. I'm trying to be fair to all sides. Thank you. We're going to go right into item three. I know there were some, I think, repeat speakers. I think they had signed up to speak on several items, so we'll call those as well. Sorry, give us one moment, please. Second speaker for item three, Ms. Bates, Kristin Bates. And if you've already spoken and you don't want to speak again, it's up to you, but I'm calling them over again, that's all. Thank you, Ms. Bates.
Thank you, ma'am.
I've actually been sitting here with just some questions, because I know this is not an open dialogue, but I have some questions. President Hanani, since you've made yourself the face of this chaos, let me direct these questions to you then, on the record. What changed between last week and today to justify calling another special meeting? Why was it scheduled at 4:00 PM when most parents and staff can't be here and during the last week of school nonetheless, when there are 1,000 other things happening? Why hasn't the public seen a single document or heard a single fact that supports pushing out this superintendent? Why are you refusing to follow the established review process already scheduled for this summer? What's the actual cost of terminating her contract, and where will that money come from? Will you lay off teachers when the district runs out of money? Why protect a failing school with barely 200 students while other campuses are also in need of funds and repair? Why are military-connected families being sidelined while your allies get special treatment? Why demand integrity from our superintendent when you're unwilling to model it yourself? Your statement, Ms. Hanani, said that you had no intention of hiring your friend. While you may see that as clearing the air, it's kind of a little more alarming that you don't seem to have any plan at all. And finally, who exactly do you think you're representing? Because clearly, it's not us. Do you want a TEA takeover as we have seen looming for other districts in our city? We're watching, and we won't forget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates.
We do not get to come in with a shock-and-off fashion, wipe the slate clean, and start over to make everything fair and better for our schools and communities. Just because we didn't get what we wanted, the way we wanted it, and how we wanted it, doesn't mean we get to start a plan to set the wheels in motion to get rid of the superintendent and then have our say in picking a new superintendent if, as I quote one trustee, whoever that may be, if that happens. No, not a setup at all, not a witch hunt at all. But at least we will all get our part of the process this time around. That's our job, right? We should get that opportunity. Or should you? Should you be agreeing to plans being devised in the background amongst those who wanted it to be done their way? They saw it their way. They wanted a clear-cut resentment that was created and hostility for all of their decisions made from the time they did not get their way forward. Not having enough data, feeling like they were left in the dark, that could have been Being able to make already-informed decisions because the decisions were already made, that was part of the problem. Wait, really? Stop. That's what we're here today. You're asking for the same thing. They're wanting you to do the same thing without data. Make these decisions about getting rid of her without data. How can you do that? You haven't asked for a presentation from any of us. This is not right. You all have the power to change the trajectory of this ill-devised plan of attack for purposes of personal gain or whatever. Look at the employees killing themselves for these children, all of the higher-ups making positive changes happen. This is proof that having the right people in the right positions are doing the right work. We are seeing positive results. Change takes three to five years. Don't blow it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra.
I'm not going to waste my time introducing myself. You all know who I am. You spoke of transparency last time like it never happened. Please, what you people are doing right now is a lack of transparency. What you are doing now is a witch hunt. The only problem is that Ms. Sayavedra is not the witch. You three need to look at yourselves in the mirror, and you know who I'm talking about, and ask, "Am I doing right by the children of EPISD? Am I doing right by the employees of EPISD? Or am I the witch?" The information that was shared on KVIA is absolutely false. I can only surmise that there's something bigger at play here. I know that you, Mr. Cuellar, have political aspirations. This is not how to go about it. I also know somehow the group Amanasair, Veronica Escobar, and Josh Osovedo are involved in this sham. Why don't you enlighten the audience and the viewers of this board meeting as to what you guys are hiding? Talk about a lack of transparency. So Ms. Sayavedra has done more for this district in the last three years than any other superintendent. I should know. I've been with this district for 37 years, straight. Look at the data. Look at how many people are supporting her. Did you talk to the employees to hear their thoughts and opinions? An overwhelming number of people who work for this district are in full support of Ms. Sayavedra. That's a lot of people. Principals, teachers, volunteers, therapists are all in support. What does that tell you?
Thank you, ma'am.
How is that three of you don't know what's happening?
Jenny Solo.
Hi, I'm here again. I was here last night, or last week until 11:00 PM. Tonight, you're discussing the Superintendent Sayavez feature again behind closed doors. And let's call it what it is, a political ambush, not a personnel review. You've shared no data, no misconduct, no public explanation. If she truly failed in her role, you would have brought forward evidence. Instead, you're making backroom moves with no justification to the parents, students, or staff who deserve answers. You've actually brought a bunch of people that don't like each other together. And honestly, Trustee Sutton and Osterlin, this is your moment. Ask yourselves why now? Why in secret? Why the same law firm doing both the separation and superintendent search? Why doesn't it have to be the one tied to President Hanani and her boss? We need transparency here, not legal theater. And you're voting to buy her out, not because she's failed, but because she stood up to political games. Under her leadership, they faced challenges, and she's excelled: stabilizing the budget, rebuilding trust after years of dysfunction, showing up in ways that past leaders haven't. And now, after all that progress, you're pushing her out? For what? No violations, no ethical breaches, just politics. And believe me, this is going to follow you, because we're watching, and your names will be tied to this in the news for posterity on the internet. If this vote passes, let it be known, it was never about performance. It was about punishing someone who refused to play along. You don't pay someone to leave when they're doing their job. You back them. You stand by them. You prove why they're unfit, which none of you have done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Solo.
Bill Hicks.
Thank you, board. My comments are directed specifically to item three. I want to address some of the specific natures of Superintendent Sayavedra's leadership. During my tenure as district attorney, we implemented a county-wide truancy program. And the El Paso Independent School District under Ms. Sayavedra's leadership was instrumental in supporting that program and getting it moving forward. We couldn't have done it without the leadership and the support from EPISD. During my leadership, we also implemented a gun threats or threats-or-no-joke video. The El Paso Independent School District Police Department, with the support of the superintendent's office, were very supportive and helped to get that video off the ground, once again showing that the superintendent's office was always directed at supporting the students and getting the best message out for the students. Her leadership speaks strongly in the things that I have directly seen her do in our community to move our community forward. I want to speak strongly to that, because that's very important. But you know, her leadership really should be coming at you in a very loud volume because of who has been standing up here speaking for her: principals, teachers, student leaders, PTA parents and leaders, concerned taxpayers, just parents. The whole spectrum has been speaking to her.
And that's time, Mr. Hicks.
Hear her.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
I'm sorry. I have time now, so I'll address you. Board President Hanani, Trustee Lovridge, Trustee Osterlin, Trustee Sutton, superintendent, thank you so much. Ms. Beals is not here, but I want to thank her. Trustee Col, thank you too. Okay, let me see where I was. I was saying that the selfishness can end today. All of these items on the agenda are all about the same thing, and the selfishness can end today. There is time to work with the community. We may want the same things, but we need to work together. So Ms. Hanani, if you're so bold as to resist the urges of your own power, you can stop this disaster before it becomes your legacy. Trustee Sutton, Lovridge, Osterlin, Mr. Cuellar, you don't have to be party to this dereliction of ethics. You can hold the line, or else chaos and instability will follow. And EPISD, currently a beacon among neighboring districts, will lose the respect of the community and its standing with TEA potentially. And that will be your legacy, and the legacy of this board.
Thank you, sir.
Choose wisely, for it's your legacy to screw up.
Next speaker, Bernadina Inungaray Fitz. I know I called her before. Ms. Fitz? Thomas Zavala. Kendall Jessup.
I'm speaking to the two new trustees tonight. You likely feel a lot of pressure and loyalty to these other three trustees up here with whom you celebrated with on election night. But what they're asking of you isn't showing loyalty to you. It's quite the opposite. They're using you as political cannon fodder. They want you to fire Superintendent Sayavedra without cause, without transparency, and without due process, the transparency you promised your constituents. All I'm asking for you is to give you time. It does not mean you're becoming her cheerleader or her biggest supporter by voting to keep her in. It just means you're giving her time, time to really talk to the constituents and time to really evaluate the data. Ms. Sutton, you said the data's important to you. The data supports Ms. Sayavedra. Ms. Hanani, going back, I want to clarify earlier. Your Facebook post said, "It appears some people don't really lose well." It's really sad that that's what you got out of last week's meeting. These people came here to speak to you. You look down. You doodle. You're finally making eye contact with me. Thank you. It's so sad that that is what you got out of this. You've made this completely political. Like people have said, there are people in here that have come together that do not get along. So now, tell me, scheduling a meeting at 4:00, hoping you wouldn't get this turnout, who's the sore loser now? Thank you, Ms. Jessup.
I'd like to ask for another point of order. I know that part of the public comment is to not go after personal attacks, and we haven't called it. If you want to talk about data, if you want to talk about research, then you're more than welcome to talk about that. But in terms of public attacks, public attacks are not going to be tolerated. That's the point of order that was stressed beforehand. So we would just ask that you keep the decorum. That's all. Thank you. Mr. Ross Moore, next speaker.
Let me pick up real quickly. I had one sentence left last time, and I'm getting a little confused on bouncing from past tense to future tense and like that. Please end this irresponsible drama before you do serious damage to this district and students you claim to serve. Now, I enjoyed working with Senator Rodriguez against Juan Cabrera and his charter schemes. Hell of an ally in that fight, and I respect him greatly. But in the years since, the last board of managers taken over, the state law has changed, the powers to the commissioner have changed, and basically, they can declare a board of managers because they don't like the font on the sign behind you. That being said, what you're going to do behind closed doors is wrong. What you are going to do, to paraphrase Arthur Harris of the RAF, is to sow the wind, and then you will reap a whirlwind. What whirlwind, you ask? Why the TEA Board of Managers takeover whirlwind? Because of your ill-conceived, spiteful acts, a TEA Board of Managers is rapidly looming reality. It's out there, and they will do it. You own it if we're taken over. It will be your legacies, and it will be your shame.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
I told my members, and I'll tell you to your faces now, what you're doing is normally called a lynching.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Next speaker, Alan Carter.
Buenas tardes a todos ustedes. Agradeciendo la oportunidad por tomar la palabra como madre representante de la escuela Lamar. Y pues agradecer la posibilidad de que es un paso más para la educación, para sobre todo mujeres que estamos haciendo malabares para que nuestros hijos sigan a la educación.
Yeah, I...
Oh, perdón.
Señora, ¿qué es su nombre, por favor?
Cristina Valdez.
Okay.
Called her earlier.
Oh, I did call her. Okay. If we can do, I guess, let's restart. I called her earlier, so I think it was for two things. Okay, so we can do... I was just informed by legal counsel, she'll get twice the amount of time that way she showed up.
That's credit. It's under the law, it's twice the amount of time if we don't have simultaneous translation, which we're not going to have. So somebody will translate.
That's why. Okay, I'm sorry.
But she gets to speak. So that's why it is twice the amount.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Really, it's just the same amount of time, but it's the translation.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you for the clarification. So she's... Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Thank you for the clarification. So she's getting twice the amount of time. I don't know if everybody heard Ms. Collins, but it's twice the amount of time so that the translation can take place.
I am a mother of Lamar. My children go to Lamar Elementary.
And I'm going to stop you for just a second. I'd like to hear both of you all, ma'am. So if both of you all can step to the microphone, or we can put another mic also next to it, if that's possible. That way, both the voices are heard. I don't want to silence anybody. All right. And then, once we get the technical issues, we'll start the time.
I'm very grateful for the people that has made it possible. That the school keeps working for the benefit of the students. That the programs grow stronger for these students. For the age, the trajectory that this school in special has. Y porque de ellos han surgido hombres y mujeres que han defendido este país como veteranos de guerra, entre otros servicios a la nación. Because from there, there have been people that have grown to be veterans of war, or they have given their service to the nation. We should be proud that the institution remains open. Because the administration and the teachers have helped the students to grow up, to be better. And that in their classrooms, the students have double value because they have two languages. And let's allow this society to see this schools to keep growing for the country. And let's see the schools like the lungs of the city so they can keep breathing. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Alan Carter. I know I said it before. Alan Carter. Next speaker, Ernesto Ricardo Torres. Next speaker, Julie Chavez.
Thank you. As I was saying, I grew up hearing stories of courage and of corruption. President Hanani, what I learned as a child, watching the kind of corruption you are now marrying, is this: what is right always wins, and it always outlives the corruption. That's why I stand here, not to defend our superintendent, because she doesn't need it. She has led with transparency, consistency, and a steady hand. Her actions have aligned with her words. I'm here so she knows she does not stand alone, and so that you know it too. Meanwhile, just weeks into your presidency, you're the one under investigation. You skipped public comment, disregarded basic procedure, and had to be coached through your own agenda by trustees who fundamentally oppose your leadership, just to keep the meeting from falling apart. You lack the courage to be transparent, the experience to lead with integrity, and the humility to listen. And now you ask the district to trust you with its future. The trust has not been earned. You broke it before it even started. So I'm formally calling on this board to place an item on the next agenda, specifically the removal of Board President Leah Hanani, and accountability for any trustee complicit in this process. Let the next meeting reflect your courage and not your complicity. Complicity also comes from silence. Let it be the moment EPISD continues its leadership in the right direction and deepens the healing from the past, so much so that we boldly and unapologetically reject anything that would take us back to the corruption this district once knew far too well.
That's time, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
Dr. Lori Marie Hutellen. Was that better? Okay, good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Again, I'm new to this. I prepared for this board meeting that I decided to attend at the encouragement of other parents at my children's schools that I know to be engaged citizens. And I listened to them telling me it's time to pay attention. So I went to try to find any documentation I could to prepare for this meeting, to inform myself. And so what I found was the publicly available agenda, and then for each agenda item intended to be addressed in open session, an executive summary of the board agenda item. So for Item 3, title, discussion, and action to approve voluntary separation agreement with Superintendent of Schools. Justification of statement, blank. Purpose of agenda item, blank. To be held in, couldn't even fill that one in, that's also blank. Texas government codes, blank. Authority for action, blank. Staff responsible, Board President Hanani and Board Vice President Lovridge. District improvement plan, objective, goal, or need addressed, blank. Summary, Board President Hanani and Board Vice President Lovridge requested this item to be placed on the agenda. Administrative recommendation, motion, blank. Funding source, blank. Fiscal impact and cost, blank.
That's time, ma'am. Thank you. Next speaker, Betsy Hadad.
Hello again. This is just a comment directly to Ms. Saavedra. Don't allow the Board to force you into voluntary resignation. We know it's misleading. We know you care about this district. You show up for more school events than any other superintendent has in EPISD, and I was a product of EPISD. Just last year, you attended Tippin's 20th Year Celebration and walked in our parade with us, in your dress heels nonetheless. We know you've shown up for other schools just the same. You care about us. You, sorry, you showed up for us. Thank you, and now we're showing up for you.
Next speaker, Vanwa Pierre. Is that right? Did I pronounce that right, sir? I'm sorry. If you let me know how to pronounce it, I'll pronounce it correctly, sir.
Good evening, Superintendent. I'm here to express my support. I've been watching the news, social media. It's very disturbing. I feel like you're being harassed by some of the trustees. Our Harge, this new one, just got elected. Take some time. Get to an order. Do not wash to judgment. We're not perfect. And do not score this up. And do not fire the Superintendent, our first Latina to ever be serving this school district. We're 22 million in debt. I'm not sure if that's accurate, but I just want to show off for the teachers and express my support for the Superintendent. Thank you.
John Auger.
Board members, Ms. Saavedra. Right here, this is straight from Ms. Hannity's reelection site. It says that professionally, I've recently been certified as a municipal advisor, and our firm serves school districts across Texas. So is your firm going to bring on the next Superintendent? Is that what you're telling us in advance? And then, down here, as I seek reelection, my priorities are fiscal responsibility. Well, when we bring back a school that's got 30% attendance and 39% of the students in that area choose not to go to school there, then that's not being fiscally responsible. And then, lastly, you also say that one of your priorities is transparency and community engagement. Well, you seem to be shying away from a lot of that. There's not a lot of transparency. We want to keep doing things behind closed doors. Well, that's not very transparent. So I mean, that's directly from your site, ma'am. Notes on the back of this one. We talked about there being a mandate. Well, there's 3,000 people that voted for roughly the four of this side of the Board. If we have these meetings for another two or three weeks, the number of people that will have shown up is pretty much equivalent to what you've got you elected. There's 47,000 students in the district. There's about 200 students at that elementary school. That's about one student for every 235 across the rest of the district. Let's do what's right for all those 235 everywhere else. And I'll be back in a couple more minutes.
Thank you, Ms. R.
President, I moved for a two-minute recess, just to use the facilities and such. Two's good enough.
Okay. If we can do a two-minute recess, just so people can use the restroom. Thanks.
Okay, can we please get everybody to take their seats again, please? We are about to call this meeting back into order. If we could get everybody to take their seats. The time is 6:05, and we will be calling this meeting back to order. Mr. Secretary?
I'll let everybody get adjusted for just one more moment, just in case. Next speaker, and I believe it's Aidé Rodriguez. Aidé, yes, there we go. Thank you, ma'am.
It doesn't work. Oh, yeah, it does. How are you? Good afternoon. First of all, I'm going to say something that is very important, because I have noticed, I've been here for a while, I'm 30, let me do it already. I noticed that the same people are coming twice, okay, and not letting other people talk. I don't agree with that at all, because I've been here for a while. I don't agree with that at all because I've been here for a while and you keep on calling the same people. One minute and 30 seconds equals to three minutes with two people, okay? That's what I wanted to know. And I came here because I actually came from Lamar. I came from Lamar and from there I went to El Paso High. Everything that I have heard from El Paso, good school districts, when they closed most other schools, not Douglas, it was Savala, all those schools, and it hit me because I come from the projects. Not anymore, you know? And I don't know, Ms. Superintendent, what happened and anything, but I don't wish you get fired or anything. Just do your job. Put the kids first. Who cares about who says what? The kids go first because they're the ones learning. I don't agree how you chose how to close the low-budget schools. I think you should have gone half and half, like Messia, you should, you know, close two from Coronado for all those schools that have money and close in and close two from our schools. Not only everything went to Central. I don't agree with that. That's the only thing that I don't agree with you, ma'am. I don't know what's going on with TEA with you. I have no idea, but I will learn fast.
And that's time, ma'am.
Okay, just to let you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. And just as a point of order, I know that Ms. Rodriguez had signed up, I think, in person, so I think some of the other speakers had signed up online, so it's not that we were giving anybody unfair time or more time. Certain speakers had signed up for multiple items, that's all, ma'am, just to clarify. Thank you. Next speaker, Norma de la Rosa. Oh, she's outside. Okay, I can come back. Yeah. I'll come back to Mr. de la Rosa. Next speaker, Gina Rodriguez Nunez.
Good afternoon. I'm the principal of Tippin Elementary. I've been the principal for the last 16 years and a proud educator for the past 30 years. I'm here as a concerned member of our school district community to urge you to reconsider any plans to terminate our current superintendent. From what has been made public, there appears to be no clear stated reason for such an action, which raises concerns about transparency, which you all speak about so much, and the overall decision-making process. Under Ms. Ayvedra's leadership, we have seen meaningful progress in several key areas, whether in academic achievement, district-wide initiatives, community engagement, or overall morale among educators. These strides should be acknowledged and built upon, not disrupted without any justification. I have worked under several superintendents, and this is the first superintendent who truly follows through on her commitments. Thank you, Ms. Ayvedra. She consistently attends the majority of our principal meetings, and I can honestly tell you that's a first, something that hasn't happened in the past, and makes it a point to communicate openly with us, keeping us informed and engaged. Under her leadership, long overdue changes have been initiated across the district. Departments that were previously mismanaged are now moving in a positive direction. Our accountability rating has improved due to the structure changes that have been made through her leadership. This is the kind of leadership our district has needed for a long time, and we are finally starting to see the benefits of these improvements.
And that's time, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, Norma de la Rosa.
Good afternoon, President Hanani, members of the board, Ms. Ayvedra. I am Norma de la Rosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. Status quo is defined by Webster as the existing state of affairs. The question that must be asked is this: How is the vision of the future of EPISD being looked at by the stakeholders? There can only be two ways to look at this, either maintain the status quo or change. Life is an evolution of change every day in our personal lives, in our work, socially and politically, and in this moment, the conflict is to either maintain the status quo socially and politically or be a catalyst of change in EPISD. We must all accept the reality that the status quo as we knew is no longer. There is a new status quo, and the question becomes, how do we bridge the political and philosophical differences that have emerged? First, we must allow this board to do their work as the law stipulates and trust that they will make the right decision. None of us are perfect. Our decision-making skills have flaws and so will yours, but we must allow you to do your work. Ms. Ayvedra, your primary goal is to work collaboratively with the board and to lead this district as the instructional leader. Bridging the relationship between the board and you, Ms. Ayvedra, will be the impetus to move this district forward. Superintendents will not always get what they want, but the reality is no one ever gets everything we want. Just as teachers accept new campus leadership, so must one in the superintendent's chair. Now it's time to connect all the moving pieces and parts together, be the catalyst for change in EPISD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. de la Rosa.
And the last speaker are for item three, Yolanda Aranda Alanis. Ms. Alanis.
I am Maestra Alanis, and I am here to speak from the trenches, to speak on behalf of many who fear retaliation that is being investigated right now. My experience and the people that I'm representing is complete opposite of what is being mentioned today. I have heard from the same question from three different vantage points. From the parents, the last several months, Ms. Ayvedra, how can you take action to close campuses and not keep families and parents in mind and their interests, best interests in mind? From businesses, especially small businesses, if campuses are closed, how that's going to affect them? And then again, asking, how is Ms. Ayvedra taking action? Isn't she keeping our interests at heart? And last but not least, the teachers. The last couple of months, we've had job fairs for this ACE new program, and it was the most degrading thing I've ever seen. EPISD employees running from table to table, begging, groveling for a job. Every table, they're shaking their head, no, there's no positions open. And several hundred employees were displaced without being placed on a growth plan. That was not EPISD procedure, and that just left the door wide open for non-EPISD employees. So on that note, I agree to approve the voluntary separation agreement with no compensation since it's voluntary. Thank you.
That's time. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Alanis.
At this time, we'll move on to agenda, to public speakers for agenda item four. And again, if this is duplicative, just please let us know that you're waiving your time, but if not, you're more than welcome to speak, of course. First speaker, Lee Bettes. Next speaker, Cameron Sierra.
Ironically, the meetings that were canceled this morning, earlier today, you would have been able to see the agenda items come out far in advance with plenty of information, sometimes hundreds of pages of information, and they're also made available to the public ahead of time as well. As Dr. Ho Taitlin mentioned earlier, nothing's blank. You usually have a ton of information at your fingertips. That's what's normal. What's happened the last three weeks is not normal. This is far from normal. You chose to apply for this role to help us. This is where my voice shakens because I care so much. We can't let our kids down. It's not the will of the voters any longer or our voices. It's the will of those burned and bitter. Those are those who didn't get their way at some point and those now wanting to wipe the slate clean and start over. This does not work. It doesn't work that way. We do not deserve to regress as a district when we have made so much progress. These students and we employees don't deserve that. We deserve to stay the course. If it takes three to five years for change to be statistically seen, what damage are you about to do if you vote to fire Ms. Ayvedra? You will be leaving a legacy of failed opportunity and growth, sending us into a tailspin of chaos and dysfunction. Please do not fire her. I do not want to imagine what that's going to be. Imagine our possibilities of working with her alongside her instead. That's what I ask of you. This is what we're set out to do. Imagine what you can learn from her in the process as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quay.
Next speaker, Sheri Ryder.
I know you guys are very ambitious and determined to get your way at all costs. I really hate the fact that you guys don't look at me in the eye. You don't make eye contact because you're hiding things. You want us to respect you, then you need to earn it. You can't make eye contact, cut it out. I've been through hell these past years, almost losing my life. I do not have the time or patience for this childish nonsense. Life is short. Let Ms. Ayvedra continue to do good things for this district. Stop making something out of nothing and listen to what we're telling you. You work for us. So let me give you some hard facts. The morale in the district is up. There are more specialized schools to draw families to EPISD. Star scores are up a little bit, not as much as we hoped, but progress has been made. SLPs are fully staffed. Teachers and staff are flocking to EPISD because we're the only district in the area that is hiring, not laying people off. Closing schools is financially a good thing. It will help us reduce the deficit, hopefully get us to be solvent. There is transparency within the district. You just need to open your eyes and see it and be a team player. This district does not run itself, nor is it a one-man band. This district is in better shape than it was three years ago. By terminating Ms. Ayvedra, which I strongly urge you not to, you risk being taken over by the state and then all of you will be out.
And that's time, ma'am.
Say goodbye to the political aspirations.
Thank you, Ms. Ryder.
Thank you, Ms. Ryder.
Next speaker, Jenny Solo.
Hi again. My name is Jenny Solo. If this board fires a superintendent with no documented wrongdoing, no public performance issues, and no legal justification, it will go down as one of the most disgraceful abuses of power in EPISD history. You're not removing her because she failed. You're removing her because she refused to be your puppet. Ayvedra brought us transparency, tough financial planning and leadership during a crisis. She proposed a long-term fix for her $33.8 million deficit. She started consolidating to stop bleeding resources. She raised enrollment with military families. That's not failure, that's progress. But tonight, you're trying to strip her of authority before her formal evaluation. No documentation, no plan, just rushed political sabotage. This isn't just about her. It's about every student, teacher, already struggling under whiplash, leadership, and collapsing morale. The message you're sending is that data and results don't matter, politics does. Let's talk numbers. Trusty Quayre, you said you won't touch the emergency fund. So what's the real plan? Lay off teachers, staff, cut programs, or just fire the one person with an actual solution? And where's the transparency? If you vote on to install an interim tonight, we still don't even know who it is. No resume, no vetting, just blind obedience. El Paso deserves answers, and you can't provide them. Step aside.
Thank you, Ms. Solo.
Corey Song, Mr. Song.
Thank you for having me up again. I just wanted to reiterate that you guys haven't been this configuration of the board for very long. On your first meeting, you wasted money opening Lamar. On your second meeting, you wasted money hiring outside legal counsel when we had legal counsel. Today, it sounds like you're going to waste money hiring an interim superintendent. If fiscal responsibility is the goal, you failed it the first time, you failed it the second time, but you don't have to fail it the third time. Ms. Sutton, Mr. Osterland, you don't have to do this. You can vote against this. You can change the course. You can hold the line. Thank you.
Bernadina Inungurai Fitz, Ms. Fitz. Sarah Noemi Rodriguez. Thomas Zavala. Gregory Bain, Mr. Bain.
So we've heard a lot about transparency, cronyism, legacy. I think you all are astute enough to understand and to think about what you want your legacy to be. Have the courage to do what is right. Have the moral backbone and the ethical standards to do what you know to be right when it comes to Ms. Ayvedra. She has produced. She has shown results. She is an engaged leader of the highest caliber, and after three decades of service to our country, I understand what leadership looks like. Many of you do as well. Have the courage to do what's right for our students, for our parents, and for everybody you see here before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bain.
And Mr. Bain, I think you signed up again. You signed up twice for this. Do you want to waive your time, Mr. Bain?
I yield the balance of that time to someone else who has not spoken.
Thank you, Mr. Bain. Appreciate it. Ross Moore, Mr. Moore.
Jesus, I'm up here. Okay, folks, I left off using the L-word, and I meant it sincerely, and I picked my words very carefully. What this is, is an action for personal and economic reasons based on empty allegations and no due process. And silly me, I won't call you out by name, but I thought one of you might have understood the need for real crimes, not nothing burgers, due process and evidence, not baseless dramatized or overdramatized allegations. Cameron?
You're wrong. I think these empty skeletons we're getting, that's the new order at ETISD. Keep the people in the dark, beat them BS. Now, I need to know some of the rules of the road to make sure my guys aren't fired without cause, even though you're trying to fire somebody tonight without cause, which now makes me wonder, is firing without cause okay in EPISD? First, will the new rules of the road, under these, will the, first, will the interim superintendent and/or next superintendent be required to doff their cap, curtsy, or tug their forelock, or bend a knee when approaching or being approached by the board president and board officers? Second, will central office, senior staff, and principals, and APs be required to doff their caps, and so on, when being approached by the board president and board officers?
And that's time, Mr. Moore.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Alan Carter. Alan Carter. Michael Clark.
Good evening. My name is Michael Clark, a homeowner, taxpayer, and active member of this community. I'm here tonight not just with concern but confusion. This room is filled with support for the superintendent. Parents, educators, community members have shown up tonight because they believe in her leadership. So why are we here discussing a potential separation with no public explanation? To this point, there's been no evidence of wrongdoing, at least what I've seen. I haven't heard anything different, no accountability, no transparency, yet the district is considering a payout of $600 to $1 million to part ways with her. You know, I don't know what that's going to look like if she gets fired and we have to get an interim. That's insane to me. As someone who pays over $3,000 a year in property taxes just for this portion of the school district, under what, 1.0807% rate, I have to ask, how is this the best interest of the students or the taxpayers? We've seen this before, former superintendents in El Paso, Accra ISD districts, massive payouts while campuses... payouts while campuses struggle. It's insane to me. Until there's clear justification, I stand with the superintendent. She deserves fairness. The public deserves transparency, and our students deserve leadership, not instability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Betsy Hadad, Ms. Hadad, unless you yield your time, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ashley Valdez Schmudlock.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're three weeks in, and there's a lack of transparency and public engagement, political bias over district interests, mismanagement of district resources, rushed decision-making by all trustees, erosion of community and business trust. In November, I sat here, I worked with a lot of you, and these are all the things that you guys said the past board majority was doing. We had six months of the DDR, and now we've only had three weeks of this new board. And so sometimes I just sit and laugh to myself because hindsight really is 2020. To Ms. Sayavedra, thank you. On behalf of the Park community, the morale is really uncomfortable, and I think that speaks to your leadership. You were willing to work with us and did really great work. Thank you for your courageous, transparent, and inspiring leadership. Your care, concern, and ability to adapt have earned widespread favorability among students, staff, and all families. From skillfully navigating the DDR process to your performance review and the new state metrics showing growth across nearly every area, and now the new equity audit, your leadership has driven remarkable progress. We're deeply grateful for your administration's commitment to our community. We are truly thankful for your transformative leadership and unwavering commitment to EPISD's students, staff, and families. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Schmudlock.
Dr. Lori Marie Hotlin, is that better? Wave.
My students call me Dr. A. I am happy to hold until 10:00.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. John Auger, Mr. Auger.
Yep, I'm back again. So as we continue on, I find it very curious that President Hannity is up there taking notes. Are you writing down names and stuff of people that speak out against you? Just curious. Transparency.
If you can stop time, I'm going to call a point of order again. The public attacks will not be tolerated, sir.
Is that really a public attack?
That's not a public attack.
That is a public attack. Sorry, Mr. Auger, you can continue, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you.
But I find it amazing that there's a lack of transparency. Like, the board has gone back in the back and spoke for a couple hours at the last board meeting, and then they came out here, and we had no idea what was discussed back there. And now there's been very little discussion on behalf of the board members up there as we try to figure out like, what's really going on? According to the agenda, it says this is a voluntary separation. So if it's voluntary separation, who, Ms. Sayavedra? Please do not leave. There, done. Hey, she doesn't want to leave, okay? Then she doesn't have to leave. Hey, we're all done tonight, right? If it's really a voluntary separation. Goes back to like, hey, if the TEA comes in, is that her failure or is that the board's failure? To me, that's the board's failure, right? You had to bring in an outside person or outside organization, an outside group, to make it happen so that our kids can get educated here. Appreciate everything you did last week, trustee call and calling out and going through behind your NDA and saying like, hey, this is what the reality is. This goes back to the website of the president where she lists on her website that she works with a firm that works with districts throughout Texas. And because again, it's voluntary, Ms. Sayavedra, I look forward to seeing you again next week.
Time.
Sayavedra.
Thank you, Mr. Auger.
And last speaker for Agenda Item 4 is Juana Texiera.
Texiera.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la junta directiva del distrito escolar, presidenta Li Hahnani y el resto de los directivos. Good afternoon. Yeah, I do not need a translator.
Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am. We just wanted to make sure.
I'm mildly bilingual.
Okay, if we can start her time again, I'm sorry, I cut her off. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, no problem. I am a former EPISD parent, the proud parent of three students. One of your stellar products sits behind me, goatee birds. I'm not here to pontificate today or to grandstand. And indeed, what I want to speak to you about is about what we have seen over the last two weeks. It is heartbreaking, it is infuriating to see the chaos and the dysfunction that did not have to be this way. And so the only thing that I want to leave with you is to ask each one of you to go back and look at one of your policies. Policy BBF, Board Members Ethics. And let me just read some highlights from that policy to you. I would imagine that trustee call, being the longest on the board, would know this policy in and out. But let me just start with some highlights. Equity and Attitude. I will accord others the respect I wish for myself. Trustworthiness and Stewardship. I will be responsive to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating priorities and concerns. Honor and Conduct. We heard other speakers today talk about honor, integrity, and ethics. Well, honoring conduct says, I will tell the truth. It also says, I will share my views while working for consensus. I have not seen a lot of consensus, certainly in the statements to the media and the back and forth and social media. I will base my decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. Integrity of Character.
And that's time, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I will send a copy of the policy to each one of you, and perhaps you will find the time to read it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Texiera.
And speakers for the last posted agenda item, item 5, Lee Bettes. Cameron Sierra.
Might as well, right? One more. Good evening. I am Cameron Sierra, proud speech-language pathologist in EPISD. I will share again that we cannot allow history to repeat itself. We cannot allow a person with less than stellar performance to touch this district, whether it is an interim role or a permanent one, when we have an amazing superintendent in front of us right now, who we do not need to let go. It is not a voluntary anything right now. Some people will say that it is better to have a person who understands the city and the culture and diversity. I would say it is more important to have someone in charge who actually has knowledge and experience with a district this size, and she has proven that she has not only worked with a district this size previously, but here, she's doing a very good job doing this as well, and doing it extremely well beyond our words. Sometimes I'm at a loss for words because we've come from so far behind to where we are now. The city is watching. Remember that whatever you all decide today, it is building and leaving a legacy. And I'm truly hoping that the decisions that you all make today, you are knowing that you're speaking on our behalf as employees, the children we work with. I'm a taxpaying citizen in the Northeast, and I'm asking you, please do not get rid of our superintendent, who has changed all of our work ethics and everything that we do on a daily basis. Do not let her go, please.
Thank you, Ms. Solo.
Jenny Solo.
Hi again. Let me be clear. If you fire the superintendent tonight with no public reason, no completed evaluation, no plan, this will go down as one of the most reckless, disfaceable abuse of power in EPISD history. We're watching a political ambush in real time, and people are watching online right now. You're removing a superintendent not for failing, but refusing to obey. She's been fighting a $23 million deficit, guiding us through tough cuffs, and making data-driven choices. Now, midstream, you want to toss her out and replace her with who? No name, no vetting, no public interview. You call this leadership? Let's talk about the law firm handling this. The same firm tied to board president Hannity's former boss, same firm handling both the separation and the search? That's not just a red flag, that's a five alarm fire. Let's not pretend this is about kids. It's about control. And if you do vote to approve this sham tonight, you own it, all of you. Your name will be etched into the story of this district's decline. To trustee Sutton and over Osterlin, you can still walk away from this. Don't let someone else's agenda destroy your credibility. We are parents, we are voters, and we are watching. You fire her tonight, we will not forget.
Thank you, Ms. Solo.
Cory Song.
Hi. I wanted to just say that repetition is probably one of the best techniques for learning. So that's why I'm up here again. I wanted to speak specifically to you, Ms. Sutton, and to you, Mr. Osterlin. You're really important tonight, more so than you know. And I want to tell you my story. My story is about Ms. Sayavedra. Whether she knows it or not, after COVID, our sped department here at EPISD was, in my opinion, in shambles. And I departed, and I went to greener pastures over in Socorro because I heard it was great. And it was for the first year or so. And then they just wiped out so many positions. And this was before all of the stuff started coming out in the news. So we went and we worked with the board, and we tried to advocate, and our board was just so dysfunctional that, with one shining example, one shining exception, of course. And I do, at that time, I wanted a change, again, greener pastures. In that time, Ms. Sayavedra happened to EPISD, and I heard rumblings of good things happening in special education. And I came back. That's my story about Ms. Sayavedra. She brought me back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Song.
There was one speaker in the beginning. We didn't know what agenda item that signed up for, just in case that person came in. Regent Payne. Regent Payne. Okay. Bernadina Inungaray Fitz, Ms. Fitz. Sarah Noemi Rodriguez. Thomas Avala. Karen Galanter. No, Ms. Galanter was here earlier. No? Okay. Ross Moore, Mr. Moore.
One of the things I had pounded into my head since I was a private is good leaders need to listen to, need to listen to what they need to hear, not what they want to hear. You've heard a whole lot of folks saying what you need to hear tonight. I'd ask you to pay attention to them. These are well-meaning folks. And yes, you've got a whole bunch of people that don't like each other, working together in common cause. Now, I'm the union thug, and I don't want to see her fired. Let me tell you something. You're a worker in EPISD. She has cleaned up the mess of the Cabrera era. Bodies are still coming to the surface out of that, but she's cleaned that up. Do we agree with each other 100% of the time? Probably about 40 to 45% of the time. But every conversation I've had with her has been respectful, civil, and honest, unlike some of you. Okay, that's what I expect. I'd ask you, listen to what you need to hear tonight. This decision is yours, but you're going to be setting more precedence than you want to with results far, far greater than you believe. Of the soups I've had here, going back to Ansel Dua, okay, she's the best. Please don't get a big head over that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Alan Carter. Alan Carter. Dr. H. No, Dr. Hotlin.
Ho-Talon.
Ho-Talon. See, I was going to say Ho-Talon before, and I was like, no, it's not Ho-Talon. I was going to say it.
All good.
Thank you, ma'am.
I first actually would like to thank you, Mr. Quayle, for the respectful way in which you have facilitated the public comment portion of this meeting. So thank you for that. That can't be an easy job. With respect to Agenda Item 5, because the way the board is conducting itself right now and its processes is difficult to trust, it makes it difficult to trust the decision-making that's going to come out of this process. So I have a hard time. I guess I'm concerned with your decision-making about who you will choose to bring in. I'm frankly also concerned about who would choose to come and work for you when job performance is clearly not what the motivating factors are in making decisions about the person's job. Who, what is their motivation if they're willing to come and work for the way this board seems to be making its decisions right now?
Thank you, Dr. Hotlin.
John Auger, Mr. Auger.
And I apologize, Ms. Sayavedra, for getting your name wrong last time, but I'm practicing. There's a time and a place for what we want to have happen here, right? We're supposed to see her get a review and possible action or dismissal. But that's always done for, across the board, like on the military side, for teachers, even for our kids, right? They get a report card that says how well they've done. Well, let's let Ms. Sayavedra get her report card. Don't just go and oust her before that. Otherwise, why not just go and start, hey, kids, I know there's one week to go in school, you all got Fs. You're all done. Is that really what we're saying? Is just to make them all go away at the last second? No. Give them their due review. In the military, they get a 4856, right, Mr. Osterlin? They get a 4856. They get something that says good, bad, or indifferent. She's entitled to that. Her OER, her NCOER, she's entitled to that. Don't just send her on her way packing right before that evaluation. Give her the evaluation. Tell her what she did wrong. For Ms. Sutton, you're a teacher. You've heard tons of teachers. You're all in support of her. Tow the line with them. Support her. Has she done anything in your view that's wrong, that she should be removed? Hold the line with her that supports those other 47,000 students in the district. Mr. Osterlin, you're former military. Don't shut up in color. Don't shut up in color. Do the right thing. And again, I look forward to seeing you again next week, Ms. Sayavedra.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Auger.
And last speaker signed up is Ms. Delarosa, Norma Delarosa, unless you wave. Wave, okay. Wave time. And that's the last, those were the, all the speakers for all the agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. At this time, this meeting is closed under sections 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code.
Another one.
...
Good evening. It is now 8:20 PM and we are back from closed session. We will move on to item number three. Discussion and action to approve voluntary separation agreement with superintendent of schools.
President Heneny, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, what's your motion?
I move to accept the superintendent's voluntary retirement agreement, which provides for her change in position and reassignment to superintendent emeritus from June 15, 2025 until her retirement from employment on January 30, 2026, and authorize the board president to execute the agreement.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Before we proceed to a vote, is there any discussion on the item?
Yeah, I have something I'd like to say. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. My wife always reminds me to talk right into the microphone. I'm touched by the public show of support here tonight. I, I, I needed this. I know this meeting was scheduled at 4:00 PM on purpose. Let's, let's not pretend otherwise. It was designed to minimize public participation, to discourage working families and educators from showing up. Our meetings are usually at 5:00 or 5:30, but not this one. It was rigged for low visibility, and yet you came here anyway. You showed up, you took time off of work, you rearranged your schedules, and you sat in this room for hours because you care about this district. I just want to say from the bottom of my heart that I see you, I hear you, and I appreciate you. It does my heart good to see overwhelming, the overwhelming majority of our community that wants what I want, a stable, well-functioning, student-centered school district. I've read your emails. In case anybody's curious, the tally was 54 to zero. Fifty-four emails, individual emails, not, not forum emails that we get sometimes, but 54 personal emails in support of keeping Superintendent Sayavedra. They were heartfelt, they were detailed, they were personal. Many came from district employees and principals who risked their jobs, frankly, their reputations and their, and their relationships to speak the truth to power. That kind of bravery is rare, and it's powerful, and your advocacy matters. Your voices matter, and for what it's worth, your voices were heard, even if they were ignored by some. The public gets it. According to a recent KFOX poll, 64% of El Pasoans said that they wanted to keep Diana Sayavedra. That's not a small margin, that's a landslide. And tonight, it seems that it may be disregarded by a handful of trustees that think that they know better than 64% of our community. When I interviewed Diana Sayavedra in 2021 originally, I spoke with one of her references, and he told me something that's kind of stuck with me ever since. He said, "Keep your eye on her. She's a workaholic, and you'll need to make sure that she takes time off every once in a while." And over the past three and a half years, I've seen exactly what he meant. At one point, I even promised her pregnant daughter that I'd do my best to make sure that she would slow down, visit often, and be there when her granddaughter was born. That's the kind of commitment Diana Sayavedra brings, sometimes to a fault. More than one time, she's called me on a Friday night, and I've had to politely remind her that if I want to stay married, I need to make sure that I disconnect from my phone every Friday night for date night. On a more personal note, I have five children. I say that often in meetings, but my oldest daughter, I'm proud of all my children, but my oldest daughter is a budding leader. You know the type. Straight A student, does every type of extracurricular she possibly can, and she tends to be a leader in whatever she, whatever she's involved in. I purposely, over the last three and a half years, I purposely made sure that my daughter gets as much interaction with Diana Sayavedra as possible. I do, I do this because I want my daughter to believe in herself and see what a true leader looks like. She, my daughter is normally pretty even-keeled, but when I told her what was happening tonight, she, she was very upset by that. I didn't come here tonight with hope that the outcome will change. I know trustees have, have made up their minds, and that happens behind closed doors. But I'm going to say this for the record, so that no one else can say later that they didn't know. But tonight is not about, is not about a failed superintendent. A competent superintendent is being punished, and they're removing someone who stood firm in the face of political pressure, who refused to hand out jobs like party favors, and led with transparency and professionalism even when it was hard. What's being done here tonight sends a message to every employee in the district. Do what's, if you do what's right, you're going to be punished for it. If you stand up to power, you'll be thrown out. And to my fellow trustees, especially the newer ones, you got to do what you got to do. But to Ms. Sayavedra, I want to say I'm sorry. You deserved better. And to the community, I want to say that I tried, I stood, and I stood against this in the strongest possible terms. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee call. Are there any additional comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Trustee Beals?
I just want to start off by saying thank you to everyone who came out here.
I know that the time of this meeting was not very, you know, convenient, shocking. Nothing has been very convenient since we, you know, got a new board presidency. I want to thank everyone who has worked so hard on DDR and put so much work, time, effort, tears, emotion behind that. I know it was a lot of work and, but tonight's meeting showed how much we all can get along, even if we don't all, if we don't all agree on everything. I feel like tonight we were united for what is right. And I, I am here to have my voice be heard for what's right. And I don't lead on just emotion, I go by facts. And a lot of facts weren't given to us or the new trustees that were just elected. And it's very unfortunate when you don't have that information in front of you to make the best decisions that you can make. Again, I'm not, I have been very, very pleased with our superintendent. I have seen the student outcomes be better than they ever have been. I could not be more proud to have my kids within the last two years in EPISD. I don't know if I would feel the same after tonight. I appreciate our community, I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate our principals and teachers and everyone who is here to make a better life and, you know, better education, quality of education for our children, because they deserve the best. And I can't promise that that's, that's everybody's first motivation for things. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for showing up and speaking loudly, even if you feel that you might be retaliated against in the future. We see you, we appreciate you, thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Beals. Are there any additional comments? Dr. Leveridge, can you repeat the motion? Can you repeat the motion before I call for the vote?
Can I, can I say a comment?
Oh, yeah.
Just briefly. I just, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out as well. Okay.
I'm going to ask for a point of order. We're trying to give comment, we were respectful with everybody when they gave their comments. I see Mr. Moore saluting me, "Thank you, sir," even though I'm not an officer. But in terms of everything that, that, that we're trying to speak about up here, we have our comments to give. You, you all gave your all's comments. We're just asking for decorum and order during the meeting. Thank you all.
I wanted to thank Ms. Sayavedra for, for her professionalism. We spoke on Friday last, and I thanked you then for your professionalism. And I thank you now again, because it is very admirable how we were able to speak together and how we were able to continue to ensure that the business of this district continues uninterrupted. With that, I want to thank the staff. We've asked for you to be here for awfully long over the past several days, and your professionalism is apparent, each and every one of you. And for all of those across the district who are concerned about continuity, who are concerned about the functioning of the district, rest assured, you have an excellent team around you, and you will have an excellent superintendent emeritus to continue to serve over the next months. And we are absolutely happy with this team. This team has shown, no, I, I've, I've given respect. Could you please give it to me? This team has showed a great deal of professionalism through this. It's a hard time, I understand that. We all do understand that as a Board of Trustees. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I really appreciate it to all of you, and thank you again, Ms. Sayavedra.
I will reread the motion. "I move to accept the superintendent's voluntary retirement agreement, which provides for her change in position and reassignment to superintendent emeritus from June 15, 2025 until her retirement from employment on January 30, 2026, and I authorized, and authorize the board president to execute the agreement."
Trustee Sutton, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Trustee Osterlund?
Abstain.
Trustee, trustee Leveridge?
In favor.
Trustee Quayre?
In favor.
Trustee Beals?
Definitely not.
Trustee call? Trustee call?
No.
I vote in favor. That motion passes four to one to accept her separation agreement. And before we move on to the next item, I do want to thank Ms. Sayavedra for her service to this district over the last three and a half years, and I will share my comments with her in private once this meeting is over. We are going to move on to the next item, which is item four, Discussion and Action on Superintendent of Schools' Duties and Responsibilities in Employment Status.
Have a motion? I'm moving to, I moved to table the motion, rather.
I'll second that. Can we take a vote on tabling this item? Trustee Sutton?
I vote yes.
Trustee Osterlund?
Abstain.
Trustee Leveridge?
Yes.
Trustee Quayre?
Yes.
Trustee Beals?
Abstain.
Trustee Call?
Abstain.
I vote in favor, this item will be tabled. That takes us to item number five, Discussion and Action to Appoint Interim Superintendent.
I have a motion. I move to appoint our current CFO, Martha Aguirre, as our interim superintendent effective June 16, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Before we take a vote, is there any discussion on the item?
Yes.
Trustee Call?
I feel what a lot of you are feeling right now. It feels like tonight that the forces of darkness, corruption, and selfish ambition have won.
And I'm going to call for a point of order.
A teacher recently told me-
Trustee Call, you know long ago-
As a point of order, it's a discussion.
Can I get a, can I get a sec, can I get a second on the point of order?
Second on the point of order.
I have a First Amendment right to speak.
Right, there's a-
Did you try to do this last time?
Trustee Call, the point of order was made by trustee Quayre. It was seconded by trustee Leveridge. You have agreed to abide by Robert's rules of order. Can we get a vote on the point of order? All in favor?
Aye.
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 What's the point of order we're voting on?
What, did you just vote on it?
A point of order for your commentary.
So are you, excuse me, are you saying it's a personal attack or something that's outside of the rules?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you had a motion and a second on the point of order, and it passed, and trustee Call still gets to speak. You cannot censure somebody from the dais who still has a First Amendment right.
Glad to hear, glad to hear the First Amendment still exists.
Ms. Collins had stated something, and I don't think anybody heard it. Ms. Ms. Collins, if you could please repeat, ma'am.
I apologize, I'm having trouble hearing over here as well. So you had a point of order, and it was seconded, and then the board voted on it, and it passed. However, so you, you make your point that, you know, there was a point of order and that you're outside of the rules, Robert's rules. However, trustee Call still has an opportunity to speak from the dais.
Yes, and that, that will continue to be given to him. Trustee Call?
Thank you. A teacher really recently told me something that's been sticking with me. She said, "It feels like this board has started a fire and left 47,000 children and 7,500 employees trapped inside." I wish I could say that that's a total exaggeration, but that's kind of how it feels from my perspective. It's hard not to be discouraged at times like this. It's hard to not feel a lot of anger and resentment towards our board president and other trustees that are bringing this on our district. But I, I couldn't count how many times I've told myself, the famous words by Nelson Mandela recently, that resentment is like drinking poison and waiting for the other person to die. I'm going to do my best not to do that. But I do feel a sense of failure here tonight, like I couldn't stop it, like I couldn't do enough. I was having a discussion with, with my oldest son the other day, and I was telling him how I felt, how I felt discouraged, and I felt, I felt like I failed. And he, he looked at me straight in the eye, and he said, "Dad, you didn't fail." He said, "You helped wake people up about what's happening here, and that's valuable." And he's right, because what happened here tonight, it didn't happen in the dark. It happened in front of a, a community that's fully awake and is paying attention. And let me say this, the arc of history is long, but it bends towards justice. Truth will win, integrity will win, good governance will win. Maybe not tonight, but eventually. Julia, I love what your mom said before she died. I think that that's, that's spot on. That gave me a lot of comfort, and I appreciate it. Benjamin Franklin, okay, last quote. Benjamin Franklin said, "A clear conscience is a continual Christmas." I have a clear conscience tonight. I stood up, I spoke the truth, I fought for what was right, and I'd do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Call. Is there any discussion to this item? Any other discussion to this item?
I would like to speak.
Trust, Dr. Trustee Leveridge?
I would just, speaking to the, to the motion, I would just like to say that Ms. Aguirre has demonstrated a tremendous amount of integrity, of competence, of versatility as well in the role of CFO. And I feel very strongly that she is the right person to serve as interim superintendent. And this is something that is especially reassuring as we enter budgeting season to know that we have a solid financial team behind us. So I, again, I really cannot speak more highly of her, and I really appreciate that this role is going to be filled with somebody who's very strong and very well-connected across the district with many, many years of service. Thank you.
Trustee Quayre?
Sorry. Again, thank you all for being here tonight. I know that in terms of everybody speaking, it was, it was extremely clear and abundantly clear that everybody was speaking from the heart. I don't think anybody showed up because they were told to show up by somebody else. I think it's because they wanted to be here to voice their concerns. And that's, you know, that's absolutely respectful. I'd be doing the exact same thing in terms of us being as unified as a board as possible. You know, I don't think I'm sugarcoating anything when I state that, you know, that there are some divisions amongst the board. Everybody can see that. I think all the news stations are here tonight in terms of covering it. But in terms of what we discuss in closed session, we can't get into that. I don't want to violate any of those rules in terms of the voluntary retirement agreement that's been entered into. Again, we can't discuss that right now either. I know there are probably, probably everybody here wants to talk about that. That has not been signed off on yet. So in the sense of I'm trying to be as, as clear and open-minded as possible in the sense of, you know, people wanting to ask questions, media wanting to ask questions, there is only certain things that we can discuss legally and lawfully without violating the law. We can talk about our own personal feelings, but in terms of anything that hasn't been signed off on yet, that's a, you know, legally binding contract. So I understand that everybody is going to want to ask those questions, and those questions will definitely be answered once that contract has been finalized. I'm not speaking as board counsel or anything like that. It's just speaking in terms of trying to let you all know where we're coming from as a board. In terms of the timing, I know that that was raised a lot today. I know I was in trial today since last Friday. I got a call from Ms. Hanani asking when we could post it. I actually had to ask the judge to cut trial short today so I could be here for the meeting. You all have seen that our meetings have been running extremely late. We're trying to also get back home at a reasonable time to our families too, and I understand that everybody is shaking their heads right now, saying, "No, that was done on purpose to try to stifle people from showing up." I mean, that those are, those are personal opinions. In terms of everything else, I mean, because we have tried to talk amongst ourselves as, as board members, we are definitely trying to keep the decorum amongst the seven of us, right? That's not always going to be the fact, but in the sense of us trying to work together, this is definitely a very, very important part of our positions as board trustees, but it's not the only position, right, that we have and the only responsibility we have as board trustees. There is still ample amount of work to do. Ms. Sayavedra, as part of, right, as, as what was written on, she will still be a superintendent emeritus for, I think, seven months, is that correct? So Ms. Sayavedra will still be here with the district, providing that guidance and providing that support, especially to Dr. Aguirre, or Ms. Aguirre, I'm sorry, if she is voted on as the interim. But in terms of trying to keep the district in line with the goals and objectives that, that the district has as a whole, we are trying to do that type of work. So I would, I mean, I, I understand that you all are inflamed right now and upset and maybe enraged. I, I, I get it. But we are asking for your consideration in the sense of trying to keep on doing board business. So that's where we're at, that's where I'm at. That's the conclusion of my comments. Thank you, President Hanani.
I have a quick comment. I feel-
Trustee Beals?
I feel a little jealous that Mr. Quayre got a call seeing, to see if his schedule worked for this time, because I didn't get a call. There's a lot of things that are not being communicated to Mr. Call and I, just to clarify transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Beals. And to clarify, I think trustee Quayre was the only one who was working and had a trial that day. He was actually the only call that I made.
We all work, and we all have schedules too.
Thank you, trustee Beals. Moving forward, as to the actual item itself, I want to echo some of Dr. Leveridge's statements regarding Ms. Martha Aguirre. I want to make it very clear, because there was a sense of concern on her part as to the timing, and I want to make it very clear to the community that we asked her to agree to take this role on after we had noticed that there would be a potential retirement agreement. And so it's very important to communicate that to the community. Second to that, I think, is the importance of having continuity, especially regarding the superintendent's role in, as superintendent emeritus. She can be called on as an advisor to the interim superintendent for any matter relating to the district, and they have an incredible working relationship. So I think in terms of ensuring continuity and stability for the district, that, I think, is going to be the most stable thing that we can do, especially as we approach the end of the budget cycle for this year. With that said, I'll ask for any additional comments before I move to the vote. Barring no additional comments, the motion on the floor is to approve Ms. Martha Aguirre as the interim CFO. Interim superintendent, geez, I'm sorry, thank you. Interim superintendent, starting on June 16, 2025. Ms. Sutton? Yes? Trustee Osterlund?
Yes.
Trustee Leveridge?
Yes.
Trustee Quayre?
Yes.
Trustee Beals?
Abstain.
Trustee Call?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that motion passes five with two abstentions. Is that correct, Ms. Collins?
I, I didn't, I apologize, I didn't hear the vote.
Five, five yeses and two abstentions?
No, I heard, I heard you say that, but I, I lost. I believe that your two abstentions are here at this end by Ms. Sutton and Ms. Osterlund.
So that's a-
Okay, all right.
Trustee Osterlund and- Trustee Osterlund and Trustee Beals abstaining, and all other trustees voting yes.
Okay, so we had two abstentions?
Yes.
And then, so, yes, it would be five, too.
Okay.
I apologize, I couldn't hear.
No worries, I just wanted to make sure to clarify for the record. Okay, before, sorry? That motion passes, yes, five in favor and two abstentions. Before we adjourn, I want to allow the superintendent to share her thoughts to the public. Again, the, her desire with the separation agreement, and we will try to make this separation agreement, this retirement agreement available to the public as soon as we can. It does need to be signed first. Her desire, I'll let her share that with you and share some comments. We thank her for her service over the last three and a half years and for everything she has done for this school district and look forward to working with her as a superintendent emeritus as we move the district forward. But before we adjourn, I would like to give her some time to speak.
Thank you, President Hanani, trustees. And I just want to begin, just as many others have said, by thanking this community, the parents, the staff, and the teachers. The outpouring of support has truly been humbling. When you work as a leader, leadership can be lonely. And to hear the comments tonight, again, were very encouraging and very humbling for me. It's been my greatest honor and privilege to serve this school district, more importantly, to serve the broader community of El Paso. We've accomplished a lot of great work together, and I believe that the school district is well-positioned to thrive into the future. We've built solid foundations, systems, structures, and conditions for our students to thrive and for this community and school district to continue to move forward. You know, I'm not a native El Pasoan, but in the last three and a half years, what I have learned and truly noted about the El Paso community is how remarkable their strength and resilience is. Time and again, when this community is faced with challenges, you are able to overcome, and this moment is no different. With that sense of strength and resilience, I'm confident that this community will come together with a students-first focus and set students on the path so that they can discover and achieve their American dream. Thank you, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Sayavedra. Thank you again, and I do want to thank all of you for staying here as long as you have. With that said, it is 8:50. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned at 8:50 p.m. Thank you.